I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'd like to welcome everyone to the December meeting of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway, I have just a few administrative matters to take care of. First off, I want to let you know that the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exits using either the north or the south stairs to leave the building through the north or south doors. The meetings are being recorded by our Secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, so when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time that you come and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear what you're saying. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door into the room. The way it works is that we'll call the case, and then the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify him or herself, state their address, then they'll raise their right hand, be sworn, and then after that, they'll have an opportunity to present their case. While they're presenting the case, there may or may not be questions or comments directed to the applicant and their representative by members of the board. Once the applicant has completed their presentation and any questions or comments from the board have been dealt with, we then open the meeting up to public input. We have created so far three categories of public input. We're open to additions if you have other suggestions. The first category that we deal with are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. We ask that they come up to the podium, identify themselves by their name and their address, and then direct their comments to the board and not to the applicants or any other persons in the room. Then after we've heard from everyone who wishes to address us in support of the application, we'll then open the podium to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Again, you can come to the podium, identify yourself, state your address, and direct your comments to the board. The third category that evolved about a year or so ago is for those people who want to speak to us about something in relation to the case, but they're really not sure whether they're for it, against it, they just want to talk to us about it. You're welcome to come up during the "come talk to us" portion of the meeting. Again, take the podium, state your name and your address, tell us what you'd like to say to us, and then when that category is completed, we'll then give the applicant and their representative the opportunity to return to the podium and address anything that's come up during the public hearing portion of the case. Once all of that has been completed, the case will then be closed, and we'll move on to the next case. After we've heard all of the cases that are on the agenda for tonight, the board will take a recess. How long that recess is depends on how late it is, and once the recess is completed, we will then return and deal with the cases that have been presented. We will take them in the order in which the applicants remain present in the room. So if the first two applicants have left and the third applicant is still present, we would take case number three first, decide that, and then work our way down the agenda for those applicants who are present. When we've completed deliberation and decisions on all of the cases for which the applicants remain present, we'll then go back to the top of the agenda and go down in the order the cases appear on the agenda in order to and deal with those until we've completed decisions on all of the cases. At that point, the meeting will then be closed, and if you wish to know what our decision was, you're welcome to watch us on TV at home, or you can call tomorrow after 9:00 to the Town Hall, and the zoning and planning department will be glad to tell you what our decision was on the case. We'll now turn to our agenda. But first, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season on behalf of the members of the board, especially to the members of the staff who are with us every month. And we're particularly grateful for your service and assistance in making us look good in doing our jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1412-1. Upon the matter of request by Drida Tchirkovic for an area variance to maintain an existing six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 683 Tarrington Road in an R1 residential district.
Hello, good evening. My name is Drida Tchirkovic, and I reside at 683 Tarrington Road.
If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the letter that I had already submitted was just to basically give you some input about the fence and the way the neighborhood sets up. 683 Tarrington kind of begins this new cul-de-sac area right at the end of Halmore off of Wynton Road. So my house is the first one into the cul-de-sac. So when we put the fence in, we wanted to have it, obviously, I wanted it to look nice. So we did choose a more expensive fence. We have the, it's the white vinyl with a lattice top, so it, there's like a six-inch piece of lattice that's like right along the top that does kind of allow you to see into the yard, but doesn't, but does still give me some privacy just because of the width of the sides of our yard. I think I've got 25 feet wide on one side and 32 feet on the other side, which is really pretty, pretty awesome because there's not a lot of homes that have that much, you know, space in between. But I still wanted to have some privacy, and with small nieces and nephews, they didn't want them to get out, so that was kind of meant for the privacy and for the security aspect. Initially, when we went through, like I said, I ended up going with a more expensive panel because I wanted it to look nice, being that the house is brand-new, it's my home, and we had it built. I think the panels alone were like $120 each versus like $60 for the plain wood stockade. So it's hard on the survey map to see the way the rest of the cul-de-sac lines up, but my house, when it was originally built, was set back further than the house, that would be the house to the left, which is, I think, one of the maybe earlier homes that was built there. So my house ended up going back about 15 feet further back from where that house kind of sits on the line, and his kind of angle's a different way. So when we were thinking about how to, you know, put the fence up, we were very particular about making sure that, you know, it kept a nice line, and then it looked nice when you drove past it. I think we have 67 feet from the road on one, on the left side, and 71 feet from the road on the right side. So it's set back far enough that it's not really impeding anyone, and it does, you know, kind of keep this line, I guess, going with the way the rest of the houses look. Let's see. We also did put in a lot of landscaping around it so that it wouldn't look like this, you know, great big wall, but it would still look, you know, appealing and attractive to the neighborhood. So, you know, I respectfully request the variance to, you know, maintain it at what it looks like now. Again, it's not a complete stockade. It does have the lattice work, and I think, let's see. It's like an 18-inch opening of the lattice from, from the top to where the lattice actually stops of the 70-inch panel. So it's 52 inches, that's, you know, the complete solid wall, and then you have the open work lattice. So again, you're still able to see, but not, it still gives me some, some privacy, especially, you know, with the drive-by. So, right, like I said, I do respectfully request the, the variance to keep the fence the way it is.
Got a question for you right here?
Yes.
How long has the fence been up?
14 years.
14 years, that's pretty good, and did you have a permit?
Well, we did, and I think we either lost it or ended up going through that permit phase at the same time this was going on. So we did apply for the permit, did have that, I guess, approved, taken care of, but I guess the question was the height at the front. So, you know, at the time, we were doing some of the, we had put the grass in, so I think I had to get a variance for that. So there was a lot of stuff going on with the actual landscaping and property, so I looked everywhere, I couldn't find it.
I'm just curious about that because according to the drawing, if you'd actually gone back a few more feet, you wouldn't need a variance.
I know, but it, again, the way, if you look at the whole cul-de-sac, we spent a lot of sleepless nights trying to make sure it was in the right spot, so it didn't look like it was back too far, because then it would have been one panel here and the next panel would have been way back here based on that type of a diagram, so we tried to keep it so it looked attractive to the neighborhood and to us as well. I didn't want it to be ugly.
Did you purchase the house in 2003 when the survey map was done?
Yes. Oh, not 14 years, I'm sorry, 10.
But the, the survey shows the fence in place, so was it, it was put up when the house was built, right?
Shortly thereafter, because the deal we made with our builder was that we would do the landscaping. So I think that should be on file, that, I think I had like a year to get the landscaping in, so I got the landscaping completed, which is the, the grass seed being put down and actually clearing out the back lot and getting all of it manicured and landscaped, and then the fence put up.
All right. My only point is that with the fence showing on the survey, that indicates to me that the fence was there when the house was surveyed by the surveyor, which would have been prior to your closing on the house, so...
No, because I put it in, I know I put it in. What, I'm trying to think, what's the date on this?
2003.
Yeah, it's the same year.
January 2003 is when the survey's dated, and it's showing the fence in its current location.
No, actually, this, this one is a, a map of 2010. So this isn't actually an older map.
Map I'm looking at is dated 23, 2003 down here.
Well, I guess I'm, then I'm, maybe I'm confused as to what this part means here.
Has anyone complained about the fence, to your knowledge, between 2003, when it's shown on the survey, and today?
No. No, and actually, I think you have a statement that my neighbors signed off on for me, because I actually went to each of their houses and, and talked to them, and said that I was going to be putting up a sign, and I wanted them to know what it was for. And, you know, we had conversation, and actually, my, my neighbors were just at the, my daughter's baby shower this weekend, and they asked me about it again, and they're like, no, it looks great, we like it. So I've never had any complaints.
It looks like the fence that's in this survey is not in the same place that the fence is at right now. It almost looks like it's forward, the new fence looks like it's forward. If I had to bet, at least eight to 10 feet on the, on the house side, and on the garage side, maybe five to six feet.
So was the fence replaced?
Uh-uh.
Did you have an original fence at one time?
No, the only thing I can think of is when we, when we did our pool, I don't know if, if maybe the, the map that I have is the one that we, we had for the pool, which would of course show the fence being up already.
Well, and it, it shows the fence in a different spot, so that if you never, maybe you applied for a fence there and then you moved it forward, be when you actually put it up, because it is definitely, on the survey and the picture that we have, it's definitely set further back, because it's almost in line with your neighbor's fence to the left looking at your house. It's almost in line with their fence, which is to code to the back of their, to the back of their, their house.
Is, is that one of the pictures that I provided?
Well, actually, I drove by and looked at it also, so yes, I mean, both, you did provide, you can't see it at the angle of the picture you took, but their fence sets back almost one full section further back than your fence.
Right.
And again, that, that's not, the survey's not correct.
Well, it's got the two...
I'm just curious whether, and this looks like a newer fence, whether you changed it up or...
It's the same fence that we put up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same exact fence.
Well, it looks like you got, you got a pool permit in 2010, right?
Right. That might be what, what I'm seeing on here, where it says received 2010. I'm not familiar with...
It's a date stamp on that. Yep. So what...
But no, it's the same fence that we've, that we had initially put up. Nothing's been changed or adjusted to it.
Are you sure you got the measurements on the right side of the house?
Uh-huh, yes.
Because I'm looking at the overhead photo that's part of your application, and I'm looking at the survey, and the survey you've written in that it's 71 feet on the south side...
Correct.
And 67 feet on the north side, but as I'm looking at the survey and I'm looking at the overhead photo, the fence that's on the south side is closer to the road than the fence that's on the north side, so, and it looked like they're about four feet off.
Okay.
So I think you've got a fence that's 67 feet from the road on the south side and 71 feet on the north side.
I might have my, my left and right mistaken then.
Well, you might have it mistaken because of the way the survey's laid out.
Okay.
The survey's laid out, if you're looking at, you know, you're looking at it, you would think that, you know, so...
And, and you're right, because I, I think I tried to go with like left or right just to keep it straight for me, but, but you're right, I think if you do look at it, and I'm looking at it here, you know, it does appear to be that way, and so I tried to keep it as, I guess, as much in a line as I could.
But there's no permit on file with the town?
For the fence. But it was done at the time the house was built?
It was within that year.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, it was within that year because we did all of the landscaping.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, if they had a situation that's at least 10 years old, why would we, would we be getting that now? Was there a, I mean, you said, you asked if there was a complaint, and there was evidently no complaint.
Not that I'm aware of.
There may have been a check of the neighborhood or something like that. I mean, I imagine that periodically someone from the town checks to see what's going on.
Yeah, and what happens typically is that you will have a situation where someone complains about something, a number, we see it here often, after, a number of years after the fact, for whatever reason, it's not in compliance with the code, after further inspection, it is realized that there's something amiss, and that's when the homeowner's contacted that there's a problem...
Right.
And their choice is obviously either to remove the fence or come and get a variance. So sometimes it does happen after the fact for a variety of reasons.
Right, and I, I know I spent quite some time with Donna in the office getting some clarification and asking questions, because it seemed a little confusing, so I wanted to get as much, you know, detail as possible and obviously work to getting, you know, getting it corrected as, as quickly as possible as well.
A particular area has also drawn a lot of interest in the last couple of years, so there might have been somebody from the town who was by who made a note that there was a fence to check and see if there was a permit or a variance or whatever. I mean, that's how these things happen.
Yeah, and, and again, that's, you know, I understand, so, you know, definitely, I definitely want to make it right, so...
And I will note from the file, and we can circulate this, is as soon as the applicant was notified that there was an issue, she noted, she contacted the town and made application shortly thereafter.
Of course, the message is to get a permit before you do anything, right? Or at least look into it to see what's necessary.
I think that should probably run as a strip across our thing on the television.
That's right.
Before you get a permit.
And I don't disagree. I think what might have happened is because we had, we had, we were doing the, the landscaping, again, a lot was going on, building of a new house and all that excitement, so, quite possibly, because I know, I had everything for my pool, and I'm like, I know I did it because we did all this work, so...
Well, you're here now taking care of it, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
And who installed the fence?
We did.
I can hold that against you, too badly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and talk to us about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1412-2. Upon the matter of request by Joseph LaRoca for an area variance to maintain an existing front stoop with less than required front setback on premises 111 Oak Crest Drive in an R1 residential district.
My name is Joseph LaRoca, and I reside at 111 Oak Crest Drive.
If you could raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Okay. Before we get underway, I have a question for you. When I was at your place on Saturday, it didn't appear that there was anyone home, but there was no sign out in front of your house. Do you know what happened to the sign?
Yes, I brought it in tonight. I had some medical problems with my wife and myself, and I forgot to leave it out, and I did bring it in tonight, though. I'm sorry.
All right, well, the, the problem is that, you know, I don't know about you, but I didn't start reading the legal notices in the newspaper until I realized how much can be slipped by in legal notices that are published in the paper that hardly anybody pays attention to. So there's one way that we disseminate information about what's going on is through the legal notice that's published that tells people about our meeting. But the other way that we generally get more attention is by having the sign posted in the yard, so that as people from the neighborhood are driving by...
I got you.
They see that there's an application pending, and then they, if they have any interest or curiosity, they can contact the town and find out. When the sign's not out there, then the neighbors aren't getting the kind of notice and publicity that we like to ensure that they have. What we've done in the past is where the sign hasn't been displayed, we've gone ahead, we've conducted the hearing, but we've held off deliberation for another month to make sure that the sign is put up, displayed, so that if there's anyone who want, has questions or concerns about it, they have the opportunity to be heard. So if, unless you strenuously object, and even then, I'll probably overrule it, but I'll listen to your objection before I would do that. I will, uh, we'll conduct the hearing, we'll take account of everything that everyone has to say, but we'll probably defer the application to give anybody an opportunity to come in in January, and between now and then, you're going to have to make sure that that sign's out in front, okay?
That's fine.
All right. You can wait until after Christmas to put it up so it doesn't interfere with your decorations.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've written a little bit of a request here. I'm requesting a front setback variance to maintain my new front entrance. The old steps and platform were crumbling and were very unsafe. The lower bottom of my house where the old step met the house was rotten, and we had to replace that wood. We covered the old existing steps because it was hard to take it out, so that's the reason why it became bigger than expected. My wife is handicapped and needed a safe way to enter and exit the house. The structure is approximately nine by six feet, just large enough to cover the old concrete. The new structure gives a little extra space to enter and exit the house safely. We plan to stain the structure white in the spring to blend in with the house. This will be done in the spring after the wood is seasoned. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. I plan on talking to my neighbors, which I did, and I have letters from them of approval.
Okay.
And that's why...
If you can hand them to Mr. Vignette.
Okay. That's why I didn't know it was necessary to continue with the sign.
That's fine. We, we try and get that word out to everybody. When, when did you do the work?
It was, let's see, October, the latter part of October.
Of this year?
Yes.
Before you started the work, did you check at the town to see if...
No, I didn't do that. I didn't realize that I needed a permit to replace the front steps, to be very honest with you.
And then my question is, you say that it's just large enough to cover the concrete. Is the wood laid across the concrete?
Most of it, yeah, the front step. We couldn't get it out, so that's why we had to go over the front step.
All right, so if, if the board is, say, 5/8 of an inch thick, and I were to go down an inch, I'd run into the concrete?
No, no, we took, that layer of, of the concrete came off. It was the, the bottom portion of the concrete that we just couldn't get out.
I, I guess my question is this, does this come out from your house any further than, say, an inch beyond where the old steps ended?
Right, right where the old step ends.
And is it any wider in front than the old steps were?
Yes, yes, that's the reason that we needed the variance, and I didn't realize it at the time.
Okay, how much wider is it?
Well, the old stoop is probably seven feet, and this is nine feet.
So by two feet?
Yes.
Like a foot on each side?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
I did stop by and take a look, and it was, the cement was broken out underneath it, except for the front, which is the base of it, and that's why that step is out forward of it. But it looks like it was done properly, it was based in, you know...
It looks very nice.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it looked very nice to me, too.
Right.
Oh, just for the record, are we receiving letters, one letter is signed by Daniel Curran at 110 Oak Crest, Patricia DeGrazio at 100 Oak Crest, Vincent and Susan Donino at 90 Oak Crest, and Elisa Wallace at 99 Oak Crest Drive. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Mr. LaRoca, was the sign out at all? Did you have it displayed for a while?
The first day I did, and then, of course, then the wind came, and the leaves started to come down, and I started to take in some of the leaves, and I, to be honest, I forgot to put the sign back out again. I had it in the garage.
We may, I, I don't know, we'll wait till we decide the case, what we're going to do.
Okay.
I just raised that at the outset so that everyone's aware of that. Any other questions or concerns from any other members of the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to come up and talk to us about it? All right, Mr. LaRoca, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1412-3. Upon the matter of request by Knopf Shaw, acting as agent for Angelo Licordello for a code interpretation challenging the building department's interpretation for a multiple dwelling on premises 160 Densmore Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Hyman and board members. My name is Alan Knopf, and I'm attorney for Angelo Licordello is here tonight, and we're on for two matters. The first is a code, a code interpretation.
First, I need you to raise your right hand.
Oh, sorry.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Keep going here.
Keep going, just pick up right where you left off.
So, um, the first presentation is just the legal interpretation. Your learned deputy town attorney and Nick Weatherby interpreted the code that we did need a use variance, so I wanted to address that issue. So we're not going to go in any detail about presenting the development or the merits of the development at all in the first hearing, because it's just a code interpretation. Then we, we made an application for a use variance. In the event that the board agreed with the town's interpretation, then we would need a use variance. Then our development team is going to present the, the development, and I'll go over the, the use variance factor, so...
All right, just so you understand that we're not going to be making a decision on the interpretation before the hearing on the use variance.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. So the, just briefly, and we'll explain the development in more detail on the second hearing. Briefly, this would be, the property's 11.5 acres, owned by Mr. Bettinger, who's, here he is, here's, he's here tonight. And the, he's owned it since 1951. The proposal is to cite row houses, basically buildings with up to eight units. They would have individual utilities, they'd have basement, a second floor, for the most part, there might be ranch units on the side, on, on either end, and they would, they would be individual units with, there's no interior hallways or anything. They're, they're, we're calling them row houses. You might call them townhouses, except your town, definition of a townhouse says, a townhouse is that sort of a unit on an individual lot. These would all be on one lot, so the, they meet the definition, there's no definition in the code, but they meet the dictionary definition of a row house. So the question is, are these allowed, or do we need a variance? This is an R1, and R1 allows single... This is an R1, and R1 allows single-family dwelling. So, I looked in the definition of what's a single-family dwelling, and under your code, you have two types of single-family dwelling. You have a detached, single-family dwelling, a traditional house, and then you have attached single-family dwelling, including townhouses, row houses, and group houses. And while you do have some regulations on townhouses, you don't have anything on row houses. So, I think the town agreed with me that it fit the definition of a single-family dwelling. An R1 says, "single-family dwelling." However, there's also a definition of multi-family building. And the interpretation was that it also, because the definition was included regardless of, you know, the definition of multi, of multiple dwelling, which I don't think this fit under because it has separate utilities for each unit. So, these units could be sold off individually. If we're gonna go in, we could come back and ask for lot, you know, for individual lots, or we could do a condo where we don't need individual lots, or we can rent these units. And initially, these probably would be rented because he can't, we'll get to that later, but he can't get, he couldn't get financing for anything else in today's marketplace for this kind of product. But the multiple-family definition says that regardless of the foregoing, any residential building, other than a one- or two-family dwelling on a single lot, shall be deemed a multiple dwelling. So, the interpretation was, therefore, it fits the definition of a multiple dwelling, and it's not allowed. Because multiple dwelling is not listed in the list of uses allowed in an R1. So, I think here, we've got a little bit of a conflict that the code, you know, the code's been around a long time and has evolved, I assume, you know, over the years. But the rule of construction is, if there's any ambiguity, it has to be interpreted in favor of the property owner. So, I just come down to, R1 allows single-family dwelling. This is a single-family dwelling. Even if you could fit it into some other category, it's allowed. And there's nothing in the code that says you can't have more than one dwelling on a lot. Now, I've seen that in a number of other codes in other towns, and I think even in some of the other districts, in your code, there's a similar statement. But the general rule here is that lots, let's see, lots with multiple principal uses may have multiple principal buildings. That's code section 235-4. So, there's no prohibition on having more than one building on a lot in the R1. These may be things that your council, we feel, may want to address, recommend some amendments, but that's my interpretation.
Let me see if I understand you correctly. You're saying that a building that has eight separate residential areas in it-
Yes.
...with separate meters-
Yes.
-that a building with eight of those units is a single-family dwelling?
No. Each one is a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
I'm saying it's eight single-family dwellings.
All right.
Okay. So, that's the request. I understand that, you know, you might, I mean, I understand where the town's coming from and its interpretation, but that's our request. If the board affirms the town's decision, you know, we'll need the use variance, and we're gonna go ahead and present the use variance case.
Is there-
Thank you.
Is there a reason that it all has to stay on one particular lot, or the subdivision can't be divided by lots?
Yeah. The reason is that, I mean, truthfully, the biggest reason is the cost. Then, you would assess it much higher. If it's on individual units, if the exact, if it looks exactly the same, but we drew lot lines, then the assessment is probably gonna be, I don't know, 40% higher or so, and it makes the economics very difficult. So, that's why.
So, I can follow up. Thank you, Alan. A little bit on, Mr. Weatherby, if you don't mind, the interpretation. And to your question, Mr. Polino, about the connected, attached, single-family units all being single-family dwellings, I do agree with the applicant's reading of the code that your code does have two types of single-family dwellings, attached and detached. So, if these were to be attached, single, attached, single-family dwellings like row houses or townhouses, but on separate lots, I think they would be permitted in the R1 district. The only sort of hitch with this particular application is the fact that they are to be constructed on one lot. And I think, based on my reading of the definition of multiple dwelling, that subsection 2 would sort of provide an exception to the general rule that the single-family attached dwellings would be deemed single-family dwellings. Because it says, you know, regardless of the foregoing, and meaning regardless of what we have as the definition of multiple dwelling, any residential building, other than a one or two-family dwelling on a single lot, so here, we have multiple, single-family dwellings on a single lot, shall be deemed to be a multiple dwelling. So, I think for that reason, what is being described, the row houses altogether on one tax-mat parcel, would be deemed a multiple dwelling. Again, if they were to be townhomes or row houses on separate lots, I think the code is pretty clear that those are permitted in an R1 district.
There is one detail that should come along with that. That would depend on the density of which you are going to build on those individual lots.
Well, the use would be permitted, but yeah, you would still have to deal with the bulk area requirements of the code.
So, to say that 74 units, double the density for that particular district, would be permitted, would not be entirely accurate. So, while the use would be permitted, the density would be a separate issue.
Yeah. There'd be-
Just to be clear about that.
There may be area variances.
Would the density be an issue?
It's a significant issue.
There may, yeah, there may be area variances that would be required if the bulk area requirements of the code were not met, but here, we're just talking about the use.
So, yeah, on the issue of, so then, what it sounds like is, if we have a structure that has a single family or two families in that single structure-
Yep.
-that can be called a single-family unit. If we have three, or four, or five residential areas in one structure, then it's a multi-family unit.
If it's all on one lot.
On one lot.
If you have separate lots under each one of those attached, single-family dwellings.
Like a condo, if everybody owns the property in a condo-
Yes.
It's all right.
Then you're good.
But if one person owns it and it's more than a two-family unit, three, four, five, six, or 76, your interpretation and Mr. Weatherby's interpretation is that anything more than a one- or two-family unit is a multiple, whatever, is multiple dwelling.
Multiple dwelling, correct.
All right. Thank you.
You would be left, if you were to interpret the code in the way that the applicant has, you would be left with a situation where your zoning districts in some ways would be meaningless, because you would be, in essence, permitting an apartment-type building in a R1 district, based upon, which, we can argue about the gray area in the code, but that is the town's interpretation, is it's not permitted under our current code.
Because of the definition of multiple dwelling.
It, again, it looks like an apartment complex on one lot. If it was, if it was built the way that they want to build it, it seems to me that they should separate it, make it separate lots. Again, it might be too cramped to make it separate lots, but based on the density factor, it might not be feasible money-wise, based on-
That's, I understand, that's the second issue we'll be taking up.
That's the use variance issue that they'll get into, is the feasibility of constructing it in a way that would be permitted under the code. If, in fact, we do deem, or the board does deem that this is a multiple dwelling and would require a use variance, it's whether or not the project would be feasible as, under the permitted uses.
Is this something that the, has to go in front of the town board and also the planning board?
There will be a site plan approval required, so there will be a planning board approval. If there is a subdivision, if the project changes and it's not going to be on one lot, then that would require a planning board approval as well, but I don't know of any town board approval. And I think there may be EPOS permits.
I don't believe there would be. But I think the key point is, and this comes up from a couple of different board members, the key point to clarify why it started here is, you have to first interpret what we're doing before we move forward with what the project is. So, that's the reason it started with the zoning board. And of course, there would be a board process that went on separate from that, regardless of what happens.
Right. The use determination is a threshold issue to figure out sort of which path they have to proceed down.
Would these be rented or sold?
Initially, they're gonna be rented, but later, they're being built so they could be sold later on, because they're gonna have separate utilities. So, they're gonna look, they're not gonna look like, it's not gonna look like, your definition of apartment building is where you have an interior hallways and all, that's, these are gonna look like, they're gonna look the same as whether they're sold or rented, but-
So, they're gonna look similar to what's on Titus Avenue, across from like Larkspur Lane there?
But maybe John Chiraba, our engineer-
And I don't think the town would concede that, of course, they would look not like an apartment, but that's more, the density would be more in line with what you would see with typical apartment zoning, like you would think of like in an R5.
Right.
So, the look is not really how we're, how I would, you know what I mean?
I mean, the structures would be similar to what is there on the south side of Titus?
Those are two units in one, I believe, and I would let the applicant speak for how many of these would be in one. But those are two, those are two connected buildings-
Said these might be six to eight.
As opposed to-
Right.
So, imagine three or four of them connected as opposed to-
All connected, yes.
What would be the square footage of each unit, roughly?
John Chiraba, I think, do you want to swear him in here? I don't-
Good evening, John Chiraba, Lantec.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. LaPerry-
Just the average, I mean.
The average unit size, about 1,300 square feet. And I have a plan we can show you. Let's see it from this angle. This is a project that our client is currently building in Webster. If you look at the outside, on the ends, there are ranch-style homes, and then in the interior, six units, they're up and down. So, that gives a total of eight, and gives a good variety for people coming in, seniors, gravitate towards the ranches and other people.
So, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Knopf, your position is that that, that we see, is a single-family unit?
That each, that each one is a single-family dwelling.
I don't necessarily disagree that it's also a multi-family. I'm saying, but it also, it meets both definitions. That's why I think there's an ambiguity in code. Because it meets both qualifications, and the one is allowed, is what I'm saying.
So, if the code is ambiguous, then you're arguing that any ambiguity has to be resolved in favor of the applicant and not the restrictive ordinance, because the zoning ordinance is restrictive of the property owner's rights?
Exactly.
And I think, and that's, and that's an accurate premise. And again, so it's each unit that is an attached, single-family dwelling. So, and we're all in agreement on that. I just, I disagree a little bit with the statement that it's both a single-family attached dwelling and a multiple dwelling. I think it's a single-family attached dwelling if we're talking about separate lots under each, under each dwelling, but since we're talking about a common lot, I think that takes it out of the single-family attached dwelling definition and puts it within the multiple dwelling definition.
I mean, it would seem like Mr. Knopf's, under his, what he's saying, under his definition, an apartment complex, an apartment building, a 10-unit apartment building would qualify as both a single-family and a multiple-family.
Yeah, I'm not sure how he would distinguish.
Saying it wouldn't because it has interior connecting hallways. I think he's saying that's the difference.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
But I mean, if you look at the definition of multiple dwelling, it doesn't say, I mean, it says, "Any building designed or occupied for residential purposes by more than two families," which theoretically, we could say this is, but then, then I would agree with Alan that, okay, it could fall within, you know, A, you know, 1A.
Can you read that again?
Yeah. The definition of multiple dwelling is any of the following. A building designed or occupied for residential purposes by more than two families, you could say that that's this, but because the code does also define, single-family attached dwellings specifically and includes row houses, I would agree with Alan that it's a single-family dwelling, more so than just this general definition here under multiple dwelling. And then, there's a series of attached, detached, or semi-detached buildings, which are provided as a group collectively with essential services and utilities.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I have, I seem to recall that when we had the application in front of us for all these, it was explained to us that the, what appeared to be a single structure extending to the east from Hudson Avenue, was actually two structures that just happened to be connected, because there was a common wall, but, or it was two walls, and so it was really two buildings, not one building. And on that basis, it satisfied whatever the requirement was, or it didn't satisfy, I can't remember the particulars of that. But I remember there was some explanation as to why that was, that structure was two buildings and not one. And I'm wondering, how does that translate into what we're being shown here?
I don't know that that would matter, because what, what we're talking about, whether it's single-family attached, single-family detached, this definition, subsection 2 says, "Any residential building, other than a one- or two-family dwelling, on a single zoning lot, shall be deemed a multiple dwelling." So, whether, whether or not there are party walls, and these are in fact, just, you know, connected, individual-
All right. So, the difference would be that this is all on a single lot?
Yes. That's where it's problematic, from a resident, from a definition of dwelling perspective, whether it's single-family or multiple.
Is there a reason why, and maybe I'm opening up Pandora's Box, or it's not being asked to be rezoned, to be a multiple residential?
I think they've, from my understanding, and obviously, I wasn't here, but I, my understanding is that's something that's been tried in the past.
On this particular parcel?
That's my understanding, but I can't-
Yeah, I don't know. And we think it, and we believe we meet the test for use variance, which we'll get to later, so we don't think it's necessary to go through that, but-
Well, I understand you're trying to redefine, or not redefine, but define it the way you need it to be defined, versus rezoning it the way it probably should be, or could be done, if you're building an apartment.
Well, I, again, I don't think that you call, you don't call them apartments, it doesn't meet your definition and your code for apartments at all, but-
But you're gonna be renting them.
Yeah. I mean, but I can rent, you know, you can rent your house, too. I mean, so it doesn't make it an apartment.
That's true. Whether, whether they're rented or owned, isn't-
Either or, but it's a multi-family, it's a, looking at it, it's a multi-family building.
I think you understand our argument.
I understand, but again, going back to why, if it was done, and how long ago, because I haven't heard of it in the last, the years I've been on this board, why it isn't trying to be applied for again, to, you know, if that would be the way to go versus this the way to go, we're making an exception. And again, I worry that if we make this exception, who's to stop anybody from coming in with a similar project and saying, "Hey, this is what we want to do with it, and this is because you've got a hiccup," for lack of a better word, interpretation in your code. So, I can do it if they did it.
Yeah. So, I will say, yeah, as far as the interpretation, application, if you find that this type of development is a single-family attached dwelling, not a multiple dwelling, then that is now defined as your code. So, anywhere else where single-family homes are permitted, this same type of development could be constructed. That's true. As far as the rezoning versus the use variance, you know, it's the applicant's prerogative, which route they, they would like to go down. They've chosen at this point to apply for a use variance, so if we get there, and when we get there, it'll, we'll have to, you know, the board will just have to consider the evidence that they have submitted and whether or not you think that the factors for the use variance have been met. Those are on a case-by-case basis. So, if they're met here, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be met with another, with another future application.
Is there anything in our code about planned unit developments? I seem to recall those from my zoning class about 40 years ago.
Planned unit developments? I-
I don't think you have PD regulations.
We don't have anything like that?
I don't know. I'd have to check, Jim. I don't, that doesn't-
No. I don't think we have a PD zoning district.
So, it's either a single-family dwelling or a multiple dwelling?
Well, I'm saying it could be both, but, you know.
I got a question that, I'm trying to sort all this out in my great legal mind, but I'm wondering, what's the difficulty in establishing individual lots? Would that be a tomb encumbering, or would it be expensive, or would it be, I'm just thinking in terms of, if I was to buy a place, rent it for a while, then buy it, I'm not getting any land out of this, I'm just getting the building, right? Is that how that works?
Well, yeah, the, there's two problems with the lots. One is, we would need, we'd still have to come in front of you for air- One is, we would need, we'd still have to come in front of you for area variances. So it's a little confusing because you allow, we're saying you do allow the detached as of right in the R1, but by definition, you wouldn't meet the side setbacks. So it's all kind of contradictory there, we'd have to, we'd need to get variance for that. Granted, it would only, it would be an area variance. But the other issue, probably more significant issue, is the assessment. Assessment would be a lot higher, just that's the way it's done, because if you have one lot, it's assessed as one unit. If you have individual lots, they're all, the sum of the parts is more than the whole. You could do it as a condo, so we could convert, this is set up so we could convert the condo, and we could leave it as one lot. And then you'd just be buying like the airspace, I guess, inside the unit, basically. And, and you could have individual ownership, and again, we got separate utilities and all, so it's, it's set up to do that.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking here, and what I'm, I think I'm hearing, is that if this property was divided into single, single lots, there would be fewer of them because they, to avoid all the setback problems, they'd have to be larger individually, and that they would be assessed at a higher amount, which sounds to me like it could benefit the town of Aronacote.
Well, I, what we'll get to in the second hearing is that wouldn't be economically feasible, basically. If we're basically, if we have single-family detached, then the costs, you can't sell the property for what it costs to develop it. In other words, the, the cost of developing the subdivision, doing 35 lots, building single-family homes, 1,500 square feet or something like that, it's, you'd have to sell it for close to 250, and we don't think that we can touch that. You know, at least, we're not going to be able to sell 35 of them, you know, in any foreseeable timeframe that would make economic sense, so. But, but that's what we'll get to later, so basically, that scenario really isn't, you know, isn't economically feasible. But I don't want to go on too long on this point, I think we, we've made our point, you understand it.
Well, that's the question, do we understand it, and that's why I'm asking.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, okay.
I just want to be clear about a few things, because I'm not a realtor, I'm not a developer, and some of this...
Okay.
lingo going around leaves me wondering what these, what these questions, that's all.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is, your code is not the clearest. I think your town attorney would agree with that. It needs some interpretation here, it's not the clearest, you know, I understand where you're coming from, so.
Right, and so all the details on, you know, what the project is and why they're pursuing what they're pursuing, and whether it makes sense, those are all appropriate, all of those questions and concerns and issues are appropriate too, discussed during the use variance. Here, again, it's just regardless of their motivation or intent, or why they're doing what they're doing, it's just whether or not you all think based on the defined terms in the code that this is a permitted use. And then we can get into the details of, of why they're doing what they're doing, and if it's, and if the project makes sense for the area and meets the use variance standards.
Alright, so since this hearing is limited to the issue of whether this is single-family, multiple, combination of the two, or something else.
Right.
That's the issue that I'll receive comments on in the public hearing. If you want to talk about whether this is too much for one parcel, not enough for one parcel, you don't like the design, you don't like the layout, that would all be for the next hearing. So for this hearing, we're going, if you'd like to talk to us about single, multiple, combination, or both, or none of the above, I'll open it up for those who wish to speak in favor of the applicant's contention that this is really permissible under the zoning, and we should find that. Is there anyone who wants to address that narrow issue in favor of the applicant's position? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's position on that narrow issue? Okay?
Hi, I'm Sherri Albershott, and I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. And I just want to say that the code clearly does not list multiple dwellings under permitted uses in R1. And the reason that the applicant is not wanting to subdivide the property into the 35 units is because he has to use, he has to then make a site capacity worksheet. And right now, he's using all the available land to try to put 74 units on the parcel. But if he subdivides the land, if he uses it just as one parcel, that's why, how he's trying to get in the 74. But if he has to subdivide the land into 35 separate parcels, he's going to lose land. Because if you do the site capacity worksheet, which we'll talk about later at the other, you know, hearing, he loses about three acres in that, at least. And he has to do other things that have to, that will deduct from that parcel. So that's why he's trying to come in this way. And it is, this is definitely for a single, it is not allowed in R1, what is being proposed. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak with respect to that narrow issue in opposition to the applicant's position? Or anyone on that narrow issue who'd like to come talk to us? Alright, Mr. Knopf, I'll give you a few minutes to reply if you'd like.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll close the hearing with respect to that narrow issue involving the interpretation for, of the, or the challenge to the Building Department's interpretation of what constitutes a multiple dwelling, and we'll move on to our next hearing with, which a little birdie tells me involves the same applicant and the same parcel of land.
Case number ZB 1412-4. In the event that the Zoning Board of Appeals upholds the Building Department's interpretation, Knopf Shaw acting as agent for Angelo Lucaradello for a use variance to construct 74 units on one lot for the purpose of single-family attached row houses on premises 160 Densmore Road in an R1 residential district.
Okay, so Mr. Knopf, since I already swore you in once, and along with John as well, I'm not going to swear you again, we'll carry that over to this hearing.
Thank you, and I appreciate and thank the board for, for letting us go through this procedure. I didn't really think our first appeal would go that long, but we did want to get that threshold issue out of the way, and now we're addressing the use variance. This property is owned by Mr. Bettinger, who's here tonight, he's owned it since 1951. He has been trying to sell it for, I think, decades, really. He's been trying to do something with the property, he's been, been unable to, to do that. This proposal is to construct 74 single-family attached row houses on the property, which is 11.5 acres. It's a triangular-shaped, basically, property. Densmore Creek fronts on it, there is an E-Pod in a steep slope, so we know that, you know, we would have to deal, obviously have to get the permits. We stay out of those areas as far as building, we understand that. And the layouts, what we've done, have, have taken that into consideration. We understand if we are approved one way or the other by this board, we have to go to the planning board. So that our, our, the site plans you see here are really conceptual. We know that the planning board will have particulars about, you know, how we're dealing with this deep slope and, you know, where the drainage ponds will go, or the retention pond, et cetera, we understand that. Mr. Lichardello and his brother have some similar developments. They have one in the, in the Village of Webster, there's one in Town of Gates. And they are really building upscale luxury apartments. The, the units have an upstairs, except the, I think the end units are ranches, which are more popular with seniors. But the, the middle units have an up and down and a basement, and they have upscale features like granite countertops, that thing, they're nice units. And they found a market for people who don't want to buy, but want to have a nice, carefree place to live, don't want to make the commitment to, to purchase. However, they are building these so that later on, market changes, times change, they could convert them to owned units. So they have, they have individual utilities. But, and I don't think as a practical matter, it's very, very difficult to get financing in the market today if you were going to do these as, as a condo, or, you know, you'd have to sell generally a large portion of them upfront, which is difficult. Now, the, so we are applying for a use variance. What I'd like to do is turn, turn it over to Mr. Shoraba, who will explain the development, the process we went through to come up with this development, and then I'll come back and kind of go through the factors for a use variance and explain why we meet the hardship test here.
I'm just going to ask, did I, I don't think I have in my packet anything that shows dollars and cents.
Okay.
Am I missing something?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me pass around...
Because, as you know, that's, I'm sure you've seen, we've, you know, Mr. Thomas has a neighbor that we, we needed to see numbers, and I don't see any numbers yet, so I'm wondering if I'm missing something. I was curious, I know we talked about the other developments, the apartments that...
Just, I don't mean to interrupt, but just to be clear, it wasn't just Mr. Thomas's neighbor. Every use variance application that comes in front of us requires dollars and cents proof, going back to at least the first meeting that I was on the board in January many, many years ago.
I stand corrected, Mr. Chairman.
When we dealt with the gas station down on Pattonwood Drive.
What are the, we've mentioned the applicant's other apartment projects they has, what are the, do we know, just out of curiosity, what the rents are for those?
Angelo, what are, what are your rents and your other, and other developments?
That's what you typically, that's what you think this would be, or? I was just curious.
Yeah, so in that, in that range, and, and the size of the units, I guess, would be about 1,300 square feet, so. John, if you want to explain.
Did you get the sheet by the way?
You will, there's a, oh, no, they stopped here because there's, I didn't realize that there was just one sheet, I thought it was multiple sheets that were, now they're moving along.
Yep, well, I think Mr. Knopf did an excellent job of kind of going with what, what we're proposing. I just want to take a step back. As this, this park was 11 and a half acres, zone R1. R1 zoning is a lot that's 80 foot wide and 120 feet deep, very similar to Kennedy Circle, which is to our north. And it's bordered by Densmore Creek, it's heavily wooded, and Mr. Bettinger's been trying to sell it for a number of years. And one, when people come to us for a project, our first action is always, what can we do with this property based on the current code that's there? And we did that, so we prepared a concept that conforms to the zoning, using standard lot configuration, and we came up with 35 lots. It's a project, very linear, very similar to Kennedy Circle. Unfortunately, times passed us by, the cost to generate when Kennedy Circle was built is not the dollars and cents today. So I think what you see passed out is a, is a comparison of construction of a standard R1 lot, similar to Kennedy Circle, versus our plan. And Mr. Knopf touched on that, and we can go over the numbers a little while later. But if you look at the plan that you're seeing here, you've got a very linear road that runs east and west. Using that road, which is the flattest part of ground, we're going to back right up to the people in Kennedy Circle. And we'll have two access points in front of Densmore School. Very similar, very, not a very attractive project, but it does work. My challenge comes when my client says, "Okay, well, 35 lots works, it doesn't, it's not in my business plan, I'm doing this." So I said, "All right, well, we could do 35 rowhouse units on this property and never come to the zoning board and, and move forward on this project." Because it's, it's a term, and I'm sure the, the town attorney will know, clustering, Article 278 is allowed, and I think you've been in discussion today, if, if it meets the definition, that we could do the units as long as density works out. So we could do six of those buildings, I believe, or, you know, or, excuse me, four of those with numerous multi-family buildings on that site, but only go up to 35 units. But when you start doing the math and working with our developer, 35 units isn't the price point that he needs, he needs more density. We started off with a concept plan showing 92 units. And I said, "Wow, this is aggressive." We backed it off to 86 units, looked at it again, and now we're down to 74 units. And I know it looks dense on paper, but I believe this project can work in this form. Also, Mr. Knopf explained that we're very early on. The, we have survey work to do, we have the planning board to do, we have stormwater management to do. A lot of, essentially, too, some of our stormwater management questions and design theories are going to be based upon what you decide as far as your use variance. Single-family versus multi-family has a bearing on what we have to do as well. But, so we're, we're just scratching the surface on that, this is more showing intent of where we're going tonight. But we also presented this plan, we had an opportunity to meet with some neighbors, we put a mailer out last week, although it was a holiday week, we did have 10 neighbors show up at East Ridge High School for an informal meeting to discuss the plan. Because as you know, it's my always philosophy, the information is, is power. I want to know if there's drainage problems, what can we do to help them, not hurt them. So we tried to get some information, we had a good dialogue, give and take. But I think it's come, really come down to density. I think we can address a lot of the questions that come up with the neighbors, but I think 35 units is allowed by code, we're proposing 74. And I think that's kind of where I'll hand it back to, to Mr. Knopf, but I mean, the numbers are, are challenging. So if you look at our breakdown on the numbers, I'll go through them rather quickly. If we do conventional R1 homes, approximately 2,000 linear feet of road, we accounted for a storm sewer design, sanitary sewer, water main, pavement with gutters dedicated to a, built to a dedicated roads requirement. You have a construction cost of, of almost $700,000. And if you take that and divide that by 35, now you're down to almost $20,000 per lot before you start building a house. And if you build a 1,500 square foot house at $125 a square foot, you're at 187 for a total of 207. And that area of Aronacote is, doesn't support that, that number, unfortunately, I wish it did. So if you look at what these developers do, they put the road in, they put the water, they put the sewer, they pay for all that. And town never puts that stuff in, I know that's a little misnomer, that happens a lot. So all that infrastructure's in the ground, and it'll take him, and probably Nick can help me out, I mean, I don't know how many new house permits are coming to Aronacote, but I bet you it's three to seven a year, if that.
I just wanted to ask, so you're saying you wouldn't ask the town to take the dedication of the road?
Well, I was explaining the 207 number, which is a, which is a dedicated number.
I think you're saying the town doesn't pay to put it in, not that they won't end up maintaining it later on, but that they...
Oh, that's a, that's not an insignificant issue.
Oh, yeah, they don't pay to put it in.
Yeah, so, so, you know, just looking at standard subdivision development, which, so that 207 number is, is significant. And, and that's a lot of money, a lot of time for those houses to sell, he'd probably be carrying this property for 10 years or more. But if you look at the rowhouse numbers, using the same pavement structure, the plan that we show you is not a dedicated road. It's a, it's a privately owned road maintained by the developer, so that takes it off the town. Now you're down to $132 a unit, which makes it more realistic for the area, and...
$132,000.
$132,000, excuse me, rounding a little bit. But, so that's really where we are, it's more in line with the market of the, of the neighborhood. And, and more in line with today's society, as Mr. Knopf has stipulated. But I guess at that point, that's really the plan, I could go over more particulars of it, unfortunately, we're early on, so I can't talk about steep slopes or anything like this. This is the first step. If we move forward from here, we'll be making applications to the planning board for both E-Pod permits, site plan approval. And the site plan approval and subdivision process will go parallel as we go through this, depending on which way we go.
And the SEACER would be done with the planning board if it were to be approved, is that right?
Correct.
Well, I think that, that's something that we can get into.
Yeah, that would...
Well, well, if they were inclined to vote tonight, they would have to do SEACER before, but, but yeah, you could choose, and I think Kathy's going to speak a little bit about that, but...
When we get to the appropriate time.
Yeah, there, there's our different avenues to undergo your SEACER review.
Just out of curiosity, what, what is the gentleman selling the piece of property to the developer for? How much is the cost of it?
We noted on our, on our sheet, $200,000.
$200,000.
So the developer's buying the property from the owner for $200,000. And what has the property been listed for sale at in the past?
Mr. Malta, who's the realtor involved, he's going to come up here later and give you some of the, the numbers on the efforts to sell it and give some testimony with regard to, you know, what houses can, you know, whether you could sell a house in Aronacote for the numbers you'd need here and, and so forth, so...
I can tell you it's assessed at, just hold on one sec, unless you guys know off the top of your head, it is, I believe it's assessed for about $98,400, does that sound right?
$98,400?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think the, the purchase...
A whole 11 acres?
But the purchase is contingent upon actually... But the purchase is contingent upon actually getting the zoning approval. So it's not worth that, frankly, you know, if people aren't gonna pay that if you can't get the zoning approval. Maybe it's only worth ninety-eight thousand if you can't build anything on it and all you can do is, you know, is go hiking back there or whatever, so. All right, well, I guess I, I'm gonna address the, the use variance, the use variance factors. We did send a letter and we went through them, but I'll try to briefly go through them. And right now, Mr. Bettinger owns the property, so the question is, can he get a reasonable return as an undue hardship? He's been unable to obtain any return on his investment, which he's had, him and his wife have had for more than half a century. He bought the property initially in nineteen fifty-one, and he's, it's not economically feasible to develop a subdivision with detached, single-family homes on individual lots. As these numbers show, it would cost, per unit cost, about two oh seven five. That number doesn't even include the cost of financing, the cost of caring, the development, and the absorption, meaning you're not gonna sell thirty-five houses the first year. You're gonna have to carry this over many, many years if you could ever sell them all. I think Mr. Malta, I'll get to later, that you probably wouldn't sell one of them at the price, because you'd probably have to sell them for about two fifty, and that you're not gonna, and you're certainly not gonna be able to sell the whole, or large share of the development.
I think I'm missing one thing. Would help us if we knew what he paid for it in nineteen fifty-one. We're talking about reasonable return.
Okay.
On what?
Mr. Bettinger, what, Mr. Bettinger, do you know what you paid for it in nineteen fifty-one?
I think around six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Six thousand dollars.
Right, good. But then you'd have to go through the analysis of inflation.
Right.
Is six thousand dollars worth a hundred thousand today? I don't, I don't really know, or two, I don't, I don't know what the number is, but...
Well, it's a help. Here's, the only issue I would take with that statement is that we don't have to go through that, that the applicant has to give us that.
Well, I understand, I understand, I understand. Well, the point is, today, he's unable to do anything with the property, it's not feasible to develop it for the R1, the R1 use, if, you know, if you go against us on the interpretation, to do single-family detached is not a feasible alternative.
The use variance application is premised upon the fact, the assumption that we've already gone against you on the interpretation.
Right.
So we'll all assume, without deciding, that we've resolved that issue against you, and if we don't, then all this will have been just a nice exercise, but...
Right, right. And right now, Mr. Bettinger's paying about four thousand a year in taxes, so he really, I guess every year is eating up his investment in, maybe a year and four months or something like that, because of the, of the large tax burden he would have on the property. If it was at two hundred thousand, it would probably be eight thousand a year in taxes or so. So that certainly is a, is something that's gonna stop him from enjoying his investment. But he really, he's really unable, he's basically stuck with this property that he's had for half a century, because you can't, the point is, the R1 zoning, if you interpret it the way the town, your, Mr. Weatherby has interpreted, you really can't do anything with this property, because it just, the numbers don't work.
If I can ask counsel a question, are we allowed to factor in taxes when it comes to reasonable rate of return on an investment? Is that one of the things that we factor in? Or are taxes something like death that are just there?
I don't know what you mean by that factor in.
So as we're factoring in the reasonable rate of return, the fact that you have to pay taxes, do we have to equate the taxes into the, do we have to take the tax variable and put it into the equation when we're trying to figure out what a reasonable rate of return is?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fair to include taxes as a carrying charge on the property, but, yep.
Okay. And, in any event, so if we did the single-family detached development, it would be a failure. The developer frankly would go bankrupt, I mean, he could not, he could not go forward with that. So only the type of development that we're proposed would be cost effective, you know, could make economic sense. The cost per unit, if we were gonna sell, you know, cost per unit is one thirty-two, so you'd probably have to sell more like one fifty. Again, initially, he's gonna be renting, those numbers also work for Mr. Lichardello to rent in the thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollar per month range with, with his cost of financing. The other factors are unique circumstances, the, we think the property is unique, it's located on the creek, there is, it's across the street from a school, and there is the Kennedy Circle to the north. The, actually, the, again, the, with the traditional, you have single-family, we unfortunately have to take out the road, the trees that would be next to the other development in order to fit the housing. Basically, this advantage of clustering, and this isn't a true 278 cluster, but it's the same concept, by clustering, we actually can leave the fifty-foot strip to separate this, so there is a substantial buffer, we can leave those trees in place. The, also, across the creek, there's apartments, so while it's zoned R1, there's, you know, there's a lot of different uses going on here, it's not like it's totally surrounded by the single-family detached, they are to the north, and the proposal is to put a large buffer in, so they won't even, even, they will not be on top of this. Self-created, it's not self-created, Mr. Bettinger still owns the property, and he's had it since nineteen fifty-one, and basically, times have changed. I mean, that's, that's what's happened here, maybe then in nineteen fifty-one, you know, when, when there was, the property was zoned, you could have done the single-family detached, but with the cost of development these days, I think is not, the cost, the market has not kept pace with that, and the cost of taxes going up and all, it just is no longer economically feasible, what maybe could have been done in the fifties. And we don't think there's any significant change in character to the neighborhood. There is, there are mixed uses in the neighborhood, school across the street, apartments across the creek, the, and we would have a very significant buffer to the north to separate this from the individual, single-family homes, which, again, might have to go if this property was developed with single-family detached. So, overall, we think that there is a, an undue hardship and that the, that the use variance should be granted. Also, I might add that your new comprehensive plan, this is very much consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for expanding the current range of options for cost, size, and type, and density, to maintain healthy neighborhoods, increase property values, and ensure high-quality housing, to ensure a range of housing options for new residents, and also provide housing opportunities attractive to seniors. And about half of the market Mr. Lichardello attracts are seniors. And the comprehensive plan also calls for increases in development density. Well-designed, high-density residential development can expand the town's resident base and provide critical mass needed to support nearby neighborhood businesses. So that's, that's, I'm quoting from your new town comprehensive plan. So, we feel we do meet, meet the test. At this point, I would like to ask Mr. Malta, Dave Malta, who is a realtor involved in this, but he's got a long experience, to address what the market prices are in the area and what the prospects would be of trying to develop this as a single-family detached development.
I would like to just say one thing, to say, you can take anything in context, in a snippet, and say one thing about it, but to say that this development, as it's currently proposed, fits within the character, it's in the intention of reading the master plan is just untrue. But you can certainly draw anything from a paragraph out of a hundred-page document, so I would like to point that out for the board.
Well, and I can understand if you, I know, and you can understand when you take, no, and I know, you can understand when you take a paragraph out of a hundred pages, how I might want to clarify it.
This is advocacy. My name is Dave Malta.
That's an accurate quote out of the hundred pages there that you were able to find.
Four ninety-nine Salt Road, Webster, New York. I am a licensed realtor, have been for fifty-two years. Born and raised in Arundic quite, lived in this town for my first thirty years. I also sit on the planning board for the town of Webster and have done that for sixteen years. So I've got, I've got some pretty good experience in these matters. I've also been a home builder in the past, and I know a tremendous amount of home builders and developers. When I first talked to Joe Bettinger about him wanting to sell this property, we did it, trying to sell the eleven-acre parcel that we're talking about tonight, and also his house, which adjoins it, which was about another two and a half acres. I couldn't get anybody interested in the whole package. And I couldn't get any developers or any builders interested in doing a single-family residential development here. I had interest for apartments, and this is different than apartments, so I'm talking about apartments, I'm talking about, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty-unit apartment building. We knew we weren't gonna go down that road, because that was tried several years ago, according to Joe Bettinger, and, and I don't blame the neighbors for really not wanting that in their backyard. This type of development is completely different, although it is originally set up as a rental unit, these are townhouse units, individual, single-family units, and I think they add to the character of the neighborhood, they certainly don't detract from it. And the upscale nature of it is something that I think is warranted and needed in this town. In selling property, and when I, let me back up a little bit, as far as talking to developers about developing single-family homes in the town of Arundic quite. The opposition is, unfortunately, your tax rate. If you take a two hundred thousand dollar house in the town of Arundic quite, taxes are about nine thousand dollars. If you compare that with the taxes in Webster, Penfield, Fairport, Perrington, even Pittsford, it's about two thousand dollars higher a year in Arundic quite than it is in those other towns. So consequently, when somebody's shopping for a new home, they look at what their monthly payment's gonna be. And in the town of Arundic quite, a two hundred thousand dollar house is gonna be about a hundred and eighty dollars a month more than in the other towns. That's certainly a significant factor, and that's one of the major factors that developers take into consideration when they gotta sell these things. So that's really an obstacle. Also, you know, if somebody buys a new home in the other towns versus here, and they wanna, they don't mind the extra payment, they could afford about a thirty-five thousand dollar more home in the other towns. So this is a severe obstacle to building, single-family, new construction in this town. Now, as far as this type of unit, especially on a rental basis, what, I've been very, very involved in this type of unit building in Webster, and also apartments in Webster. My wife was a rental manager for several apartment buildings, and we saw a large influx of Arundic quite people moving over there for upscale, nice rental units. Maybe they got a house, hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars, they sell it, they're senior citizen, they don't want the upkeep, they don't want the taxes, they don't want, they just want to live. So, that affords them a place to go, and you don't have much of it here, so they go across the bridge. So you're losing some of your residents because of that, and this would help you keep some people here. There's a lot of people that would prefer to live here, that have lived here over the years, it's a great location, you're close to the expressway, you got all the shopping you need, other than the mall, you know, you're in good shape. But, it's affordability and what you can get for the dollar. Most of the rental units, even like, single-family homes that are for rent in Arundic quite, they're nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, excuse me, nineteen seventy vintage, they're older homes require more upkeep, maintenance, and whatnot. So, that's why I feel there's a real need for this type of development here, and to keep some of the residents here in, in Arundic quite. That's about it as far as preparing.
Can you address the assessments of the property, the value, the house values?
The assessments?
The assessments on Kennedy Circle?
Well, we were talking about surrounding areas, the, you know, the Kennedy Circle homes, ranging in price from ninety thousand to, last I looked, the last one that was sold, was number twenty-five, and I think it sold for one twelve eight. So you're looking at ninety thousand to say a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar range. And that's, that's another reason, you know, the neighborhood is not a neighborhood that you'll find two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes in. And that's another reason why it's not a good site for development, a single family.
Dave, could you sell houses, and a fifteen hundred square foot house, could you sell a fifteen hundred square foot new house in this neighborhood in the range of two oh seven to two fifty?
No, it would be very difficult, I'm not gonna say impossible, but certainly extremely difficult to do it in a reasonable length of time. Got a little, I ran, today I ran some numbers, I just wanted to see, in the two hundred thousand dollar range, two to two fifty, how many homes were sold in Arundic quite, and with East Arundic quite schools, because we're dealing with East Arundic quite district. And just give me a minute. It was, oh, past two years. No, that's Kennedy Circle, this is the one. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Got too many numbers all over the place here.
Well, just about how many?
There were, like, in two years, the houses between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand that were sold were around fourteen or fifteen, in a two-year period. And a lot of those, a lot of those were, several of them were around the waterfront. Where, if you take that same price range, you throw it across the Bay Bridge, there were seventy-three sold in that price range. So you can see there's a big disparity.
In your analysis of Kennedy Circle, how many sales was that based on?
Kennedy Circle, and Kennedy Circle in the last two years, there were, there were three sales, one is active right now, two sixty-two, it's up for sale for ninety thousand, and there were ten expired listings in that same period of time, which means during that listing period, they didn't sell.
Did you say one sold for like one eighty?
Where?
In Kennedy Circle, or no?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, the highest, the highest listing at Kennedy Circle was one twenty-four nine, and it didn't sell. The highest sale price was one fifteen, and that was number thirty-five.
All right. One minute, I guess that pretty much finishes our presentation. Basically, what we're saying is that the market is not there, especially to sell thirty-five houses, you know, it just is not gonna happen, given...
houses, you know, it just is not going to happen, given the cost. And Angelo, the price, Angelo gave us the price of about one twenty-five per square foot for a new house construction and ninety-five dollars per foot for the row house construction. Those are numbers that you know from being a builder, correct?
I can say that I talked to many, many, many builders over the three-year period, and I could not find one that would do single-family development.
Has this property ever been offered for sale for $200,000 before?
No, it's been, we've, we've, it's been listed for as high as 450,000, which was with the house and everything. And then we separated it, dropped it down, tried to, tried to do something around two fifty, two eighty, couldn't get anybody interested. At two hundred, I still didn't have anybody interested. Angelo, because I've dealt with Angelo on this property on Webster, and I went to him with this, because this is his, his bag, and after we did a lot of going back and forth with Mr. Bettinger and trying to come up with something that, that was reasonable to him and workable for Angelo, we finally got down to 200,000. But even at 200,000 for a single-family, it doesn't, doesn't warrant the price. You just wouldn't be able to find anybody that, and, and the price of land is not the biggest significant thing. I don't care where you're building a house, the cost of construction's pretty much the same.
And can you tell me why a reasonable rate of return couldn't be received with fifty of these units, say, as opposed to seventy-four?
I couldn't.
Perhaps Mr. Knopf could elucidate on that?
All right.
I'm sure he's ready to.
Yes. The, and I might add, I did look, the value of a nineteen fifty-one dollar is today is nine dollars and sixty-three cents, or whatever, what you could buy today is, it's almost, almost a factor of ten, not quite. As far as, we understand that the test for use variance, Mr. Chairman, is, indicates...
So that would translate from six thousand to sixty thousand?
Yeah, and, 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 and just, I think that's consumer dollars. As you know, the, the real estate over those years has gone up more than that, but I think the problem is he's paying taxes all the way along, the, he's, he's paying the four thousand, and he's getting zero income in, basically. He's not getting any return. All, money's going out every year and nothing's coming in is his problem, because you can't really...
Does that include the house?
No, that's a separate lot.
So vacant lot, four thousand a year?
Yeah.
For eleven acres? Or eighteen acres, I think I saw somewhere.
No, part, vacant.
How many acres are on this par?
Eleven point five.
This is the eleven point five?
Right, and then there's how many acres, John, can't we use the...
Two point, the house is on two point...
No, but how much is like the E-Pod and the steep slope, the steep slope and all that? We lose the...
We haven't gone through that exercise, that's more of a planning, because we incur...
Is that part of the four thousand in taxes?
The, the eleven acres right now, holistically pays around $4,000, school, county, town taxes, right now, standalone.
All right, but is that the entire parcel, or is that just the eleven?
Not, not the two point two with the house. So the entire eleven and a half acres pays $4,000 a year in taxes.
Well, somewhere in here I saw something, oh, about eighteen, there's four point one seven acres of creek property, it's labeled on whatever the sheet is that I was given.
I don't know, there may be a separate lot. I know I looked at the tax rolls, it was, it was kind of confusing, but...
Let me straighten that out. There's, 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 there was three parcels that we originally were trying to sell as, as one package. The three parcels are the eleven acres we're talking about tonight, two and a half acres that his house sits on, and then five acres, which is Dunsmore Creek, which he owns that property. That property, Dunsmore Creek, is in the city of Rochester.
All right, so that's not taxed in Arundacoyte?
No, that's taxed, that's taxed.
So the four thousand dollars...
The only tax you're talking about is, is the four thousand plus is the, only the eleven acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And it's because your tax rate is in the forties per thousand, and it's assessed just under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And Dave, for, for sale, if these, if these units were, the, the row houses were for sale as individual units, would they, I think you said they'd sell for about a hundred and fifty thousand or so?
Yeah, if, if they came to a point where they could sell them, you generally could expect to get a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the units.
So I guess, to try to answer your question, I, I can't do the math that fast, but our cost per unit is about one thirty, one thirty-two and change, one thirty-two, six twenty-nine. You could sell them, you know, if you're, if you're selling them as individual units in the one fifty to one fifty-five range, you do have a cost of money and all in there, but I don't, given that the, the builder may, needs to make some profit, usually, what's, what's the profit margin usually, Angelo? Eight percent or?
Five to eight.
Five to eight percent or something? And the cost of interest to, because it, you know, it'll take them six months or so to get in there and, and, and be building, building units in, in a while to fill them up, so he's probably looking at a year to really have people in there. He's, he's got to, got to pay interest on that too, so he really is pretty close with the seventy-four. Whether he could shave some units, you know, he probably could, but I don't think he can go down too far and make it, make it feasible, it's still a little bit tight here.
Well, I, I guess that's the concern that I have, is maybe you could, maybe we couldn't. What we need, as you know, is specific dollars and cents proof in front of us. And, you know, I'm hearing that these are contemplated to be high-end luxury units with granite countertops and things like that, and I'm thinking, okay, and you're telling us the cost for that would come out to a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars with all the row houses. So I'm thinking, well, if we, instead of going with top-of-the-line stuff, went with more moderate stuff, which seems to be more consistent with a lot of the development that's in the neighborhood, I don't see what I would refer to as high-end housing in that neighborhood. So if we went with a development and materials and things that were more consistent with the, what's in the neighborhood, that's necessar, I mean, you're not going to tell me that it costs the same for a granite, granite counter as it costs for some other kind of, of countertop that's not granite.
Angelo, how much could you cut, if you didn't go with more top-of-the-line stuff, how much per square foot could you cut?
I'd have to look at it, but this works. I don't know if anything else would work. I mean, that's the whole purpose. Hello, my name is Angelo Lichardello. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay.
This works.
You are smart.
I know this works. I don't know if anything else would work, but I think that Arundacoyte needs something nice.
Well, here's the concern that I have, and I don't speak for the whole board, I speak for myself.
Okay.
The concern that I have is you come here and you tell me this will work. I don't doubt it'll work or you wouldn't be here. But under the code, what we have to find is, is that the only thing that will work? Or is there something else that will work? And if there's something else that will work that isn't the same as that, that isn't as extensive as this, then our obligation is to say, well, we're going to let you do the other thing that'll work, but we're not going to let you do this because this will work best for you.
Right.
And best for the developer. It's, we have to look at it, at, you know, how do we minimize the impact of any change? If a change will have an impact on the neighborhood, how do we minimize that? If the contention is that the homeowner or the property owner can't realize a reasonable rate of return, and what I'm hearing is that the six thousand that he paid for the property in nineteen fifty-one translates to sixty thousand today, I'm hearing that there's a purchase price of $200,000, so that tells me he's making three times his investment. I don't view that as being unreasonable, and, but I'm also hearing that it hasn't been offered for that to anybody else, that came down to that, but it hasn't been offered at a hundred and twenty to somebody who might, at a hundred and twenty thousand, come in and say, I can build forty units on this property that would be less dense, with less expensive materials, that would be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and things like that, and that would work. And if that's the case, which I don't know, and you don't know, and nobody knows unless we know, then we don't have the kind of evidence in front of us that it seems to me we need to find that you've, that it's been established by the applicant and the property owner that he can't realize a reasonable rate of return on his investment. And we've been through this just about every use variance application that's come in front of us in the nine or ten years that I've been on the board, we've had the same problem. We, we get applicants who come in here, and they tell us what will work for them, but they don't tell us what they paid for the property, what their costs have been, how much they've paid, what they believe a reasonable rate of return would be. We tell every applicant, this is what we need. Some of them get upset with me because I'm telling them, that's what we need, but that's what we need. And if we don't have it, then we can't make a finding that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return. And that's the first step in the process, before we even get to, do we like it, do we think it's a good idea, will it work for the town? We don't even get there, unless and until we know that what you're proposing is the only thing that's feasible under the way it's zoned now. And quite frankly, I haven't heard that yet. Maybe the other members of the board have, but I haven't.
I don't think it meets, so far, any of the four tests for use variance. You talked about the, the neighborhood possibly being mixed use. A school is actually permitted in R1, just to clarify that. Being self-created, I mean, you're trying to purchase this property to use it for a use that's not allowed in an R1. So that in itself...
With due respect, because Mr. Bettinger still owns the property, that you don't consider the fact, I mean, you don't consider the fact that he's got a purchase, he's trying to sell the property, and he can only sell it if, if a variance is necessary, if the variance is granted, if not, he's not going to be able to sell it and realize, realize anything. So he's not going to get 200,000 for it unless he gets either the interpretation or whatever.
Well, we don't know that.
Yeah, I would say if, if in fact the board did find that it was economically infeasible to construct detached, single-family homes on this lot, then that would not be a self-created issue by the owner, but I think that's more of the threshold question and what we're lacking.
The question I have, and to Jim's point, all the figures are from the developer.
Correct.
The use variance is being asked for by the owner of the property. Wouldn't this be his demonstration as opposed to their demonstration? He's trying to show his reasonable rate of return, which he has a right to, you know, if he's investing in it, building all this, he has a right, but he's not really the one that's requesting the use variance. The owner of the property is.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're jointly requesting it. The reason that the developer's showing the reason, the rate of return is because the current owner wouldn't require a use variance because he's just selling the property. It'd be the developer who wants to be sure that he's going to be able to meet the burden for his project before this board, before he commits to buying the property.
Right, but in Jim's point... Developer's willing to pay the 200,000, but I don't know if there's a developer who's willing to pay him 90,000. Right, and Jim's point, we're, we're going on a, on a use variance based on the developer's numbers versus what the chairman is saying, that someone else might do a different development with different numbers that make more sense, or...
I, I agree, and I think that that's something, I, I took a few notes, and just from a legal perspective, because the use variance test, and I think the chairman did a very nice job of explaining sort of the, the general standard of what this board is required to consider and the evidence that it, it needs to receive in order to do that, but it is, it is a very, more so than an area variance, it's, it's a, it's a legal test. There are legal standards that have to be met, and so from my perspective, just taking a few notes based on the presentation that, that we heard, some things that I think would probably be helpful for this board in order for you to be able to make the determination that this is in fact, that, that a use variance is appropriate because none of the permitted uses are in fact feasible, would be definitely some more price points for the, the per-unit building cost. I mean, we have $125 a square foot for a fifteen, hundred square foot homes, but I mean, there's no way that every fifteen hundred square foot home costs almost $190,000 to construct. That's definitely not, not the case. So maybe if, if this board could see, well, I, I don't know what's reasonable because I, I'm not a developer, but if there are $100 per square foot homes, if they're a hundred and ten, some more numbers so you can get an idea of, you know, different price points that these homes could be constructed at. Another thing that I think is, is missing is we have the analysis of the cost, but we're missing the, what the profit would be, so, or the rate of, the return. And I think we touched on it a little bit, the Realtor mentioned that they'd be selling the row houses if they were to be sold for $150,000, so that's about an $18,000 profit per unit. So what would that look like on, on the residential side? If you lowered the cost to build, and so the, the per-unit building cost was down, what type of, you know, what type of price point would you sell those homes at? What would be the rate of return there? And again, that rate of return doesn't necessarily have to meet or exceed the row house's rate of return, it just has to be reasonable. So it can be less, but if it's a reasonable return on single-family homes, then that's what this board would consider. And, and that goes toward, you know, the economic analysis, and then I think there are also a few holes in the, the standard that this is not a, a unique situation. I, I'm hearing a lot, it, it sounds like a, a lot of the analysis is just about single-family detached homes in general, and not in particular why they don't work for this particular lot. We're, we're hearing a lot about the economic climate, and that times are changing, and that it doesn't really make sense to construct single-family homes anymore. But so, for me, I wasn't hearing how any eleven acre parcel in the town of Arundacoyte, why you wouldn't make that same argument for any other R1.
I don't think there are, tell me I'm wrong, but there aren't too many that are developable.
Any, so, but, but any, even if it's not eleven acres?
Well, buddy, you could use the, it doesn't have to be eleven acres, it could be three acres.
Right.
It could be five acres, which there are a few, but yes, eleven acres.
I mean, just think off the top of my head, a, a price of $100,000, which would be more than forty thousand, it would be approximately forty thousand gain on a, what in today's dollars is a $60,000 investment, and would certainly, I think, constitute a reasonable return. That, if the property's offered at that price, and the neighbors feel strongly that they don't want this property developed, that one hun, one hundred neighbors pitch in $1,000 each, they own the property, and they've got what they want. It, we're, we're, it's being presented to us as if the only way a reasonable rate of return can be realized on the property is if this property is allowed to be used for development, and the, and the developer is allowed to make a profit. At $18,000 profit per unit and seventy-four units, that's a profit of a million, $300,000 and more, which, that seems to me is more than a reasonable rate of return on the investment that we're talking about, but I don't know that that's the only way that a reasonable rate of return can be realized. And it seems to me, from my understanding of what the use variance standard is, we have to be shown that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return for any use, a school, single-family dwellings, a church, or religious institution, a fire hall, any of those things that are allowed in an R1 residential district, which this is in. And, you know, it's not a situation, the other ones that we've had, where we've already had an existing structure, it's already built, it's already on the property, but because of changes, it can no longer be used the way that it was, or so the argument goes. And we've denied them in the past, where it hasn't been marketed at the price that's a reasonable rate of return, it's been marketed at a price to make the profit that the property owner wants to realize. And that's, it's, I don't believe that that's the standard. I think the standard is, what's a reasonable rate of return, and can you do it under anything that's allowed in the district? And I haven't heard that yet, that this is the only thing that can do that, and that's where I'm having a problem.
I do think that the fire hall, the school and all are not realistic scenarios.
They may not be. I don't know if a new church might want to locate and build a church on that property if the property was offered for sale at $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, if a church was built there, that's how much tax dollars would go to the town of Arundacoyte? Zero.
How much tax dollars go to the Arundacoyte, town of Arundacoyte, with all due respect, is not a part of the standard that's in... is not a part of the standard that's in front of us.
Understand that.
The standard is if a church were to buy that property and use it to develop a church, which is a permitted use, that carries no tax benefit for the town, but the town has decided that it's a permitted use. If a church were interested in buying that property at $100,000, that would be a reasonable rate of return? And would it be feasible for them to do it? If it would, and it hasn't been marketed yet, and there's been no solicitation of any of the churches that have developed in the area or existing churches that might be looking to relocate, and there's been no effort to see if there's any interest on their part in purchasing for that, then it seems to me the test hasn't been met.
But Mr. Chairman, the land's been for sale for 60 years. If a church was interested, they would have approached...
I think you missed the point that I said. I said if a church would be interested in purchasing the property for $90,000, which it hasn't been marketed at 90,000.
You can always put an offer in for $90,000. Just because the asking price is 175 or 200,000, you can always make an offer.
I understood it was 685,000 that it was marketed with as a package, and then it was down to 400,000, I think is what Mr. Malta said.
No.
Originally listed the total three parcels.
At 685,000, right? 450?
But that's with the house on there. This, we're just talking 11 and a half acres.
Counsel.
Okay. Just want to make your... I want to, I don't know if I might be changing gears for a second, but there's one other thing before we go to public comments. The environmental impact form?
Yes.
If we were to grant the variance, what type of environmental findings would we have to make? Because they're saying in here that the stormwater discharge for 74 units will be directed into the creek. And I'm not an envi, I don't, I don't do environmental stuff. I would think that that, that to me is a red flag, that there might have to be some finding that that does or doesn't have an environmental impact. Do we have to make any determination like that if we were to, I mean, if we deny the variance, it doesn't make any difference. But if we grant the variance, would we have to do some type of environmental determination?
Yes.
It would be subject to a swip. Kathy, can, you want Kathy to speak to it?
Sure, yeah. Kathy can go into details on it, but there, it's, this is an unlisted action under Seeker, so this board would have discretion along with the other involved agencies, which would include the planning board as to whether or not you wanted to coordinate review and designate, I would assume it would be the planning board. It doesn't necessarily have to be, but the planning board is the lead agency under Seeker. Or you could proceed and do an uncoordinated review where each involved agency, including this board, would have to go through the entire environmental impact statement and make a determination that there weren't going to be any significant adverse environmental impacts, including those related to stormwater. And I think Kathy, for those reasons and the sensitivities, had some, you know, additional issues and comments on that as well.
And we would, we would need to make those determinations before we can move on to the actual variance itself.
Prior to issuing, that's correct, prior to issuing any sort of approval.
So if you could explain what we have to figure out on that, that'd be great.
Okay. I think, I think the main point, I just want to stress, everything Ashley said, I can go over again, but you cannot grant the variance until the Seeker review is completed. So the applicant has provided part one of the short environmental assessment form, assuming it was an unlisted action, which based on my discussions with Ashley, we agree with that. And that, because it's unlisted rather than type one, that allows the zoning board to proceed in one of two ways, with a coordinated or uncoordinated review. The coordinated review is where the zoning board, as an involved agency, looks around and says, who else are the involved agencies? And tries to decide with them who will take the lead on the project. So that means, in this case, I believe the only other involved agency is the planning board. So after this meeting tonight, before any decision was made on whether to grant the variance, this board would notify the planning board of the action, even though the planning board hasn't gotten any application yet. But this board would send its application materials and the part one EAF to the planning board and indicate that a decision needed to be reached on who would serve as lead agency. So that, in any case, no environmental review will be completed tonight because that step would have to take place. If on the other hand, the zoning board decided to do a uncoordinated review, what that means is each involved agency takes, undertakes its own independent review as if it's the only involved agency with the project. So in that case, the zoning board would need to complete parts two and three of the environmental assessment. The applicant has done part one. And what's important to note there is that this zoning board does not just look at the, its approval of the use variance. It, Seeker requires that all parts of the action be considered and evaluated in that environmental review. So bottom line is, this zoning board would have to look at the development, not just the use, the entire development. In that regard, I don't want to get ahead of things, but I did generate an initial list of things that we would recommend that the zoning board requests because, as you pointed out, based on the amount of information we have, to try to evaluate the significance of potential impacts would be very difficult with the level of information that is now available. And we did initially identify some potential areas of concern, which I have listed here as material conflicts with the town's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, intensity of use of land, community character, traffic and transportation infrastructure, water and sewer utilities, natural resources, referring to Densmore Creek and the EPODs, and drainage and stormwater. And then beyond that, that's sort of an overview of the issues. And then we had a specific list of what we'd like to see so that we can get at those issues on your behalf and give you an evaluation of significance of impact so that you can decide, do you do, so, okay, so now I'm back to the case of you doing an uncoordinated review. You have to go through all that and make your own decision, no matter what the planning board decides later. So once all that information is in and we complete part two and three, you will either get to the point where you decide there is a potential adverse impact, and then a coordinated review is required no matter what, because you've decided there's one potential significant adverse impact. Or you don't identify any potential significant environmental impacts and you then reach a negative declaration and you close Seeker on behalf of the zoning board. Then the whole thing moves to the planning board and they do the whole thing. They do their own review. And in, in fact, they could find a potential significant environment, adverse impact at that point and draw you back into the process. Hopefully that wasn't too roundabout.
Thanks.
Or alternatively, i- if this board were to sort of defer to the planning board to act as lead agency, then the, the use variance application would just, if the board was to entertain it, would just be, you, you wouldn't be able to actually vote on it or, or render any approval until the planning board had finished the Seeker review process and then it could come back before this board.
And again, this is all based on the, first, the interpretation of the code.
And the interpretation is a separate issue that is not subject to Seeker. So you can do that, you can render your interpretation, you can, you can either find, you know, grant the appeal or not. So, but if you do not, and the use variance is before you, then all, everything that Kathy just mentioned would apply.
So if we affirm the decision on the issue and then get to the use variance application, we would be designating potentially the planning board as the lead agency and we wouldn't do anything more until they were finished with their review?
You would be requesting that the planning board designate themselves lead agency, and you could continue, it, it sounds like even to meet your use variance test and standards, there's additional information that you'd like to see. So you could continue with that, you could, you know, you don't have to delay all of that. The applicant can come back next month and, and see if they, you know, meet these burdens, but there could not be any vote until the planning boards could, you know, dual-track, be dealing with the Seeker issues, and there just couldn't be any vote by this board until the Seeker review had been completed.
And, and of course, with any action, just because the environmental review is closed with no significant adverse impacts, that doesn't mean your decision has to go toward approval.
Right.
Your decision is independent. You just know that whatever you decide won't have environmental impacts.
And, and I did want to point out, the city and the county, given the proximity to those borders, is, are involved agencies. And although the conservation board is not a approving body, they do have an advisory role to the planning board in terms of EPOD determinations and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think because of the proximity, there might be, you have to do a, a genuine municipal law 239M referral, so they would be interested agencies, so they wouldn't necessarily...
But they would still be...
They couldn't be the lead agency, but they would get all the notifications that the lead agency would, would circulate.
Okay. So do we have any other questions or comments directed to the applicant at this point? All right. Then we'll open it up to public input. We'll hear first from those who would like to speak in favor of the application. If you'd come forward and give your name and address. I'm not swearing anyone in here.
Oh, you're not?
No.
I'll tell the truth anyway. Mike Belmont, 37, Par Circle. Good evening.
And our former chairman.
Yeah. And, you know, I appreciate this, these issues, things that we dealt with several years back. And, you know, I would love it if, and if you want to volunteer, if there's some things that need to be changed in the code, I have a fairly decent command of the English language, I'd volunteer. But, you know, I, I read 163 pages of the comprehensive master plan and the four appendices, every word. And it's a great plan. It's well done. And, you know, I could appreciate Mr. Weatherby, you know, I don't think this was a quote out of context from Mr. Knopf, quite frankly. I don't think it was like some two-bit pastor trying to piece together some scriptures to make a point that, you know, we could, you know, kill poor people. I think that it's a reasonable quote, and I think it fits. And, you know, I'm not going to go through because time's short and I'm limited at five minutes. But the, the bottom line is, you know, if you take a look at page 40 of the master plan, thank God for these PDAs, what the heck, in our lifetime these were invented. You know, encourage a wide range, page 40.5, encourage a wide range of residential living opportunities for residents of all ages. If you scroll down, you know, there's other parts of the plan that talk about encouraging in reasonable ways, higher density living arrangements. If you take a look at the, at the pages about our, our population, Arondequay, kind of some stability around 52,000, you know, doesn't seem like it's increasing. But if you look at the, at the, at the distributions of age, there, there are multiple percentage increases over the next 10 years in, in our elderly population. There's, there's multiple percentage increases of our older working population. And there's a call, which syncs with this master plan, for alternative living arrangements for folks so they'll just stay in the town, okay? And that younger people could move into some of the other residential neighborhoods and you have a thriving town. Arondequay's 90% plus developed, right? So we have this, this area, which if you, I just took a look at these tonight, I hadn't seen these before, but these are, me as a resident, man, I'll move in. For crying out loud, I want to stop cutting grass. You know, my teenagers don't do really well with that, even though they're supposed to. But they're beautifully well, they're beautifully done. I've been through, I know some people that live in these properties in Webster. It's very, very nicely done. It's not an apartment complex. And, and honestly, we could argue these points, these fine lines, what's mixed use, what's not mixed use? I mean, I was on the committee when we did this mixed-use, you know, neighborhood here at Titus Hudson, and we're seeing some nice development and things going on, you know, there's always debates. And also, it seems to me, as I glanced at these tonight, you got another problem you even haven't, haven't even talked about. There are residents along the property edge that have built over the property line, put pools there and whatnot. You're going to have to handle that somehow. And I think it's easier to handle those kinds of issues if you have a buffer situation around this property with some woods and some grassy areas and knolls and whatever is there. I know these are concept drawings, but I think this adds to the value. And, and I know when these things happen, we've seen it multiple times along Hudson, you know, down off of Norton, we've seen these things every, every time. And quite frankly, in my, in my opinion, I'm not a developer. I happen to raise money to help feed homeless people these days. But the bottom line is developers try to come into this town, it's hard. It's hard. And then we all pay higher and higher taxes and, you know, it's hard to have development happen in a, in a town that's 90% plus developed. So when we have well-thought-out plans and we can mitigate, and God, God bless everybody here and some of the neighbors and that are concerned, and we can talk through calmly and, and honestly about what the pros and cons are, I think that's a good thing. And I do think it fits. I do think it would enhance this neighborhood. I do think if you take in consideration the amount of taxes that were paid by the property owner over time, and you calculated that in, we haven't done that, yeesh, I'm not so sure that math works out real well. And, and so I just implore you to kind of sit back and logically, rationally look at this. I, I do believe that on lots of levels, you could see, if you step back in an unbiased fashion, that you can meet the four or so, or three or four tests that you have to legally. And I think that it's, it could actually be well-done, and I just want to lastly point out that if you do these individual lots, the way that we've been talking about, it'll minimize any and all of those buffers. You'll have folks back-to-back, like I am in Par Circle. I needed a variance because I think I could reach out and touch my next, the next house next to me from 37 Par Circle over. These things happen, but we're peaceable, nice neighbors. Arondequay's a friendly place, and I think this would afford yet another opportunity for Arondequay to grow over time for the reasons I stated. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application?
Hi, my name is Sherry Evershed, and I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. The applicant has claimed that 74 units is not a substantial increase, but going from 35 units to 74 is an increase of well over 100%. That is substantial. I am submitting a site capacity analysis prepared by FRA Engineering that was done years ago and accepted by the town. This is where I have gathered the information that I am going to state now. 160 Densmore Road consists of 11.5 acres, but 3.1 acres is composed of EPOD, which leaves a net buildable site area of 8.4 acres. Roads that would be made on this project would also be subtracted from the net buildable area and leave even less than the 8.4 acres, but the plan that you have in front of you ignores all of that. This developer is using every possible piece of land in his equation to maximize his gain while totally ignoring the environmental restrictions and also the character of the neighborhood. To add insult to injury, counsel claims in his letter that there are no alternative solutions to building a rental row house development as proposed. There is no examination of a single-family project with smaller lots, which would reduce per-lot infrastructure costs and makes such a project economically viable, or a development like the owner-occupied duplexes on Titus Avenue. Regarding the neighborhood character, it will be destroyed by going from an allowable density of about 35 to 74, more than double. Furthermore, commercial rental projects in a single-family neighborhood have no history in Arondequay of increasing values of any neighborhood. To the contrary, rental properties lower area, area values. Densmore Creek is a natural boundary that buffers the single-family zoned areas from the commercial rental properties to the south. The creek is a unique buffer between commercial and residential. Adding rental property on the north side of the creek takes away the buffer, and you now have commercial rental property plopped into a residential neighborhood, causing devastation to the character of the neighborhood. The situation is 100% self-created. It is the owner who chose to offer the property at a prohibitive price for many years. We all want to sell our properties for double or triple assessed value, but that choice is only ours. The applicant has no evidence the property was ever offered at fair market value. In actuality, the East Arondequay School District wanted to purchase the property about six years ago for fair market value and had the property assessed. Mr. Bettiger did not want to sell at that price. Additionally, there is zero evidence in the seven years of the master planning process that there was any call or demand by any resident for more high-density residential rental projects, other than senior needs. In fact, the record clearly shows opposite. Please keep our neighborhood truly R1 and deny this application, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? I finally made it up. I watch you guys every, every week now. Now you're on TV. We don't swear the, the, just let me explain. The reason that we swear the applicants is because applicants are making representations to us that we're relying upon. In the past, we have had experiences where applicants have given us information that was either inaccurate, misleading, or in some instances, not accurate at all. And when we've then made decisions in reliance upon those and come to find out that the information that was given to us was misleading, inaccurate, or not even... information that was given to us was misleading, inaccurate, or not even close to being actual fact, we've been told that we don't really have any remedies because all we had was a hearing and we were given information. So the applicants are put under oath, because by putting the applicant under oath, they're now swearing to the truth and veracity of the information. And in the event that we find out at a later date that the applicant was less than candid and truthful in their comments, we're then able to have, use that as a basis for altering our decision if we feel that's appropriate, and/or possibly even a prosecution of the applicant for making false statements under oath. So that's why the applicants are sworn. Witnesses and those who've come to speak with respect, you're speaking as citizens. We don't require you to be placed under oath. We're not questioning your motivation. We're not relying upon what you tell us. We're interested in hearing your opinions as citizens of the town and expressing to us your views as neighbors and, and what you feel as the community's members you'd like us to do on your behalf. And then we make decisions. So, other than the applicants, nobody needs to be sworn.
That was one I got it, though.
All right.
John Krier, 85 Kennedy Circle. First and foremost, I disagree with a couple of things. I've been in house since 1986. I'm the second owner, okay? When I moved in there, the house was built 1966. I did a lot of work to the house to contradict what the realtor said. I had the house appraised many years ago, and they said to me, "Oh, you'll never get that many back in the area." I don't care. That, that, the area's beautiful. I knew it was residential one when I bought it back there. I travel all around the country, and I have people coming, "You put the house anywhere, Boston, anywhere, that's a million-dollar piece of property back there. You can't get the ambiance around there, okay?" Secondly, the buffer they're saying, or my houses and a couple houses there, there's no 50-foot buffer. There's no trees there. I have nothing there. And if you want to come out and count it, you could count it, as I counted it, there's no 50-foot buffer there. So if they're talking up Kennedy Circle, which they're probably right, there's where it is. I have no trees. I have from here, like over there, blank. It would just be, I throw my leaves. But other than that, it's, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and contradict them again. When somebody tells me a house only worked $110,000, $112,000, I take to that, because you know what? That neighborhood, if anybody's gone through that neighborhood, it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. And putting apartments back there would just ruin it, if that's what they're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
Hi, my name's Michelle Donahue-Dichak, and I live at 105 Kennedy Circle, and I would like to thank you guys for having the board and listening to us. Again, I would agree with, you know, the opposition that's already been proposed tonight. A project of this scope is going to cause a significant change in the character of the neighborhood, significant concerns about the proximity to all of our properties, the character that it would change. I, for one, am extremely concerned about any changes in traffic. I'm concerned about the increased density of the population and what that's going to bring. I'm very concerned about the environmental, environmental load that that's going to have, both being with some of the deforestation, with the animals that live in the habitat and the kind of changes, you know, the water table, flooding, all of that kind of stuff. I have very significant concerns about that. Right by us, we've got a senior assisted living complex. Right down the street from that, we have an apartment complex. We have diversity in this neighborhood in that direction. We don't need this on Densmore. So again, I would just like to, you know, respectfully disagree and oppose the proposal, and thank you for the time to listen to us as citizens of the town.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up, sir.
My name is Rod Clements. I live at 35 Kennedy. I purchased the property, so August, September of last year. If this complex was there, I would not have bought it. Not at all. It's a nice community down there. The neighbors are nice. I walk the dog in the evening. We, we communicate with each other. It's quiet. It's nice. Like I said, if that was there, I never would have bought. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up. Don't feel compelled to wait for my invitation. You can form a line if you'd like, you know, or if you want to sit and contemplate on before you decide, that's fine as well.
Hi, I'm Tom Donovan. I live at 65 Kennedy Circle. I also just bought my property about two years ago, and one of the main reasons was that open area behind my house. I also have concerns with the traffic flow, especially on Densmore Road. School is letting out. Sometimes it's a bear to get up and down that road already. So, that's my opposition to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Don Delavella, the 9 L Central Drive. Just a little historical background. I used to be the Director of Parks and Recreation for the town, and back in 68, we had a master plan. We looked at all kinds of properties, and Benjers' property was an important part of it. We were leasing the property across the street from Densmore that the East Arondiquay School District had, and we made an athletic field out of it. We made a proposal for that property because we wanted to make a park area out of it. Matter of fact, I had the support of the Chief of Police at that time, who was willing to help us in environmental things, and fishing ponds, using that creek and so forth, clean it all up. We made an offer. You have to check your records, it's here, but we offered, I think, around $68,000. Unfortunately, Mrs. Benjers wanted the property. She liked the idea that she would have a park around her home, and, but we were at that time unable to be able to close the deal, the, there were medical problems and so forth that had to be dealt with. My concern always been, and nobody pursued it afterwards, and there was a timetable, and the town had affordable funding possibly from the state, federal government. Just as a consideration, if it's a matter of return and keeping that property available, it was in our consideration. Other properties in the town that we looked at, we wanted, matter of fact, at one time we wanted the property where the Medley Center was, we were turned down. And the reason for it, because environmentally, it's a dumping ground at one, at one particular point. We couldn't put a playground there, ball fields, soccer fields, so forth. But this property was ideal. It had so many possibilities for, for a nice park area, play area for the kids, nature center, so forth. And it would just have been conducive for that particular area. So I bring that to your attention, and have the town think in terms of, maybe that's available, maybe that's a consideration, I don't know. Thank you.
Sir, excuse me, sir, could you repeat your name for me, please, for the record?
Don Delavella.
And your street address was nine?
9 L Central.
L Central. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Neither for it nor against it, just to share thoughts or information? All right. Then I'll give the applicant the opportunity to address issues that were raised during the public hearing portion.
Just to touch base, John Schrabba-Lantec, and I, I appreciate the neighbors' comments, and I, and I look at them wholeheartedly and, and generally try to address them. But the plan you see before you in this venue, don't have the opportunity, when you talk about lock coverage and buffering, again, this plan shows intent. So I, and if this plan was to move through the planning process, this is step one, it's a lengthy process, planning board issues of traffic, screening, buffering, all those things would come up, and with a lot more detail. I know one of the members mentioned about, you know, impacts to the creek, and it shows it on the seeker form, well, the long form or the short-form seeker shows where does the end, where does the water go? Well, eventually, all the water goes to Densmore Creek in this area, and we would have measures in place to protect that, meeting DEC guidelines. So I really can't speak to specifics for the neighbors, but, you know, as this plan moves forward, you know, all of their concerns would be, be, be heard again at the planning process, and we'd address them at that time. So I'll get back to Alan.
Yeah, just to recap, you know, on, on the process, I don't have any argument with the, you know, the way you explained the secret process. Certainly, you can move forward as a uncoordinated review and make your own determination tonight. You know, it's, it, that's your option. As far as the, you know, going back to the use variance factors, the price that's being paid, the $200,000, is only if we get a favorable ruling. He can't get that price, so, but even if he could, I think that with a real value of, if he paid $6,000, so basically paid $60,000 in today's dollars, going from 60 to 200,000 when you're paying $4,000 taxes a year over 65 years is not, is barely would be a reasonable return.
Yep, but, but to be fair, I don't think that it's, you necessarily would just compound those tax payments year after year, because we, we haven't been shown the marketing efforts for the last 60 years. So maybe he could have sold it at year five for a reasonable rate of return, or year 10, or, you know, so.
Right, but he, I mean, he didn't, he's.
Sure he wasn't paying $4,000 a year in taxes in 1955.
No, but, but, no, I understand, but we're talking real dollars. So the question was, was he paying $400?
And my point simply.
Not $4,000.
Right. And, and the more questions that we raise about what was he paying and all that, the more it reinforces in my mind what I said earlier, which is, we need the information. We don't have that dollars and cents.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. The, in the point, you did some rough math of a million dollars. I think that, I mean, granted, you don't have all the details on the financing, but it wouldn't be, it's not what it would be, because he has to pay a lot of money to get the money that didn't go into your equation. So I just don't want anybody to be misled that, that, I, I understand, I understand how you're doing.
I did 18 by 74.
Back in the envelope, I understand, I understand why you did your math, but it did not.
But I'm sure that.
It didn't include a lot of things.
And that, I'm sure, but.
Right.
As far as the unique circumstances, I think this property is unique, being the 11.5-acre parcel. There just aren't, smaller parcels maybe, you don't have to bring a road in, you can divide up into lots. Here, the problem is you got to bring a, you got to bring a road in that meets the, the town specs and all. In order to justify that, you got to have a lot of lots. And the, I think, is, nobody has disputed that the absorption rate, even, one, nobody's really disputed that you couldn't sell the houses for the, you know, the two, close to 250 that you would need to make this work. And the, it would take many, many, many years, you know, to, to market that many houses. So that's not going to work. Self-created, I think, again, the question is, what could Mr. Bettinger do with the property? And you do look at the, the possible options, so you do look like if Mr. Bettinger was the developer, or he hired a developer, so I think that is a fair way to look at it. And I think even one of the opponents said that while there's diversity in the neighborhood, and that, you know, that's, that's true, that was our point, there, there is a lot of different uses. I understand technically, yes, a school is listed in the R1 as a residential use, but it's not, it's not what I would call a residential use. A church is allowed, yes, but it's not what I, you know, would normally consider that. And the point is, and there's apartments across the, across the creek, so the point is, there's, it's not a neighborhood of just single-family detached, and with a proper buffer, granted, somebody might lose their pool or whatever, but we're going to have to, you know, we would put a, a buffer in which would result in a lot better outcome. So, you know, we do think we've, we've met the test because the, what, the property was marketed, there weren't any churches that came forward. I mean, maybe the town was interested, or that school six, seven years ago, eight years ago, whatever, but, you know, that's not the situation today. I think in today's, I think it's unrealistic to say that, that the fire department's going to build a fire hall, or the, the, the town is going to buy it, unless, maybe the town wants to buy it, but, so they should talk to Mr. Bettinger, but that the town is going to put up the money. I think the only reasonable development would be some sort of private development. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, and I believe we have one other case that was tabled at our last meeting. Is there a motion to remove case number ZB 14113, a request by Leah Hill for a special use permit to harbor up to four hens with chicken coop and run pursuant to section 23570 of the Town of Arondiquay Code on premises 54 Russell Avenue in an R1 residential district from the table and restore it to our agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and there are no absences from the board. Do you want to call the case now that's been restored to the agenda?
Yeah, I think the public hearing's closed, so I think it's just for board discussion.
Board action now, right?
Oh, okay.
Right.
Well, in the interest of, we're a community board. Was there anyone who wanted to say anything about this application? It hasn't already spoken last month and said whatever they wanted us to consider. Nobody here. All right. At the end of the meeting, and the invitation was extended by Mr. Polino, that we all go and, and check the property out. So I, I'll give, open it up to the other members of the board to relay what their experiences were. Myself, I was there from approximately 7:15 yesterday morning until 8 o'clock. I watched the first chicken come out of the coop, down the run, out into the yard. I watched that chicken be joined by the other two animals, one of which was white and the other one, I think, was brown. Is that right? All right. And the three of them all gathered together collectively at the, in the coop, and they appeared to be interacting. I was standing at the corner of the fences between the two properties and could not hear a single sound coming from the chickens. I heard dogs, I heard birds, I heard noise from the plaza, I heard cars going by, I heard doors opening in the neighborhood with other people getting their newspapers, I heard not a sound from the house of the applicant, I heard not a sound from the house next door, I heard not a sound from the chicken. I'd had a nice conversation with the gentleman from across the street, who fortunately decided to check out and see why I was there before summoning the police. And I left at about 8 o'clock yesterday morning without having heard a single noise from any chickens. It was, the suggestion was made in an email that was given to us, that at this time of the year, we might not find the chickens out because they would be cold and huddling together inside the coop to stay warm. It was a nice morning yesterday afternoon, after some of the weather that we'd had in the previous few days. It would seem to me they would have been outside rejoicing and exchanging information with each other about the night and the weather and how nice it was. And if they did that, they did it without making any audible noise that I could detect from where I was. So I don't know what other members of the board may have experienced during the time. Mr. Polino, I know you went.
Yes, I, I went on two occasions. The first occasion, I was joined by fellow board member, Mr. Tenny, and I did not, we went to the front, and I couldn't hear anything. We went to the back where the fence was in Culver Ridge Plaza, and we could hear almost nothing. And I clucked at them, I made noises, I clapped my hands, I hit the fence, I tried to do something to get a rise out of them.
Get a YouTube video of that?
I didn't, I didn't hear anything, and I certainly did not hear anything that was anywhere near the noise level of a dog or the birds that are in my backyard. And I didn't smell anything either, for what it's worth.
We were there on both sides, you know, around the neighborhood. We were there, what, 6:30?
Uh, 7:00.
6:30, quarter to 7:00, you know, a little earlier. And we couldn't get any, any rise out of, out of the, out of the chickens whatsoever.
And they were out, they were walking around.
They were out, walking around.
The speckled one, I don't know, purr'd or whatever, made some noise, but it was not offensive, in my opinion, at all.
I went to visit the coop, the house, just a few days after our last meeting, actually that Saturday morning, I met with the fellow that lives there. He took me out back, showed me the coop, showed me the chickens, relatively very quiet. While I was there, the neighbor to the left, which would be to the west, was out cutting his lawn. He spoke very highly of the, the family and them, and the chickens he was, had no problem with. I asked him about the noise. He said, you know, very little if any, and it doesn't bother him a bit. I also went back later in the evening and drove back down by the plaza and parked my car just along the fence, rolled the window down, didn't hear anything. It seemed fine to me. The coop is well-kept, the yard is, it's not full of droppings or anything like that. It's not a mess, it's clean.
I had a similar experience with visiting the chickens this month. I went on two occasions. Mostly I heard garbage trucks and a few dogs in the neighborhood. One single cluck out of two visits, that's it.
Anyone else wish to share any experiences?
Nope.
All right, then I, I think that...
We have a health certificate?
Oh, yes. We were provided with a health certificate dated December, November 6th, 2014. He writes his numbers kinda like I do. It's 11-6-14, that Marilyn, Mary Jane, and Sally are all chickens, all females, about a year and a half, owned by Ms. Hill at 54 Russell Avenue, and they are found to be free from infections or contagious diseases, including rabies, and it's signed that they're all three are healthy with no parasites. And it's signed by a DVM whose name I will not even try and decipher, but it's in cursive writing, "A dying art form." And I think with that, we will advance to our break. (pause) 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 (pause)
Last one, huh?
No, I'm coming back. Supposed to be my last one.
Yeah.
They asked me to come back.
Oh, you're coming back.
They asked me to come back.
Did you sign Bolton?
Of course I did.
Oh, we're on the side, I missed them there. Okay, alright.
Born tonight, but it wasn't last night.
Well, I don't know.
Is anyone here for 683 Tarrington Road still? Yes, alright. Uh, 111 Oak Crest Drive, still here, okay. 160 Denzmore Road, I know that you're here, and 54 Russell Avenue is here. So we are going to take them in the order that they appear on the agenda tonight, everybody has stayed. Uh, so, let me get my paperwork order in here. Where is it? Okay, with respect to the application pertaining to 683 Tarrington Road, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, uh, for the variance, uh, with the following findings. First of all, uh, the fence does not offer any great change to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the alternatives that would not require a variance would be a shorter fence, but I, as was stated, it was, um, appearance and safety, that was the initial motivation for this back when the house was built, which I think are some, uh, pretty good, pretty good reasons. Uh, this, not a very substantial request, because we're not talking about hundreds of feet of fence, it's actually quite small on both sides of the house. Uh, there is no effect on the physical or environmental conditions that would be changed or altered, with this fence being where it is, because it's, first of all, it's been there about fourteen, no, fourteen years. Uh, so the situation was self-created, but it was self-created with those, uh, admirable reasons in mind, meaning being privacy and safety, and also good quality of construction. Uh, I think it was, uh, stated that one of the motivating factors was that it looked nice when you, when you drove by. So for those reasons, I would move that we accept.
I'll second, um, but I'd also like to add the fact that this, um, has lattice, and it's on a cul-de-sac, towards, right towards the end of the cul-de-sac. So I think that changes it from something that is six feet high on a regular street where there's a thoroughfare, so I think that in this case, because it is at the end of the cul-de-sac, and because it has that lattice, it does not substantially change the character of the neighborhood. I think I would reach a different conclusion if it were on a different street, but in this case, I think that, uh, I second it for those reasons.
Any discussion?
Just, uh, to make a reminder to all about getting permits prior to putting up fences, putting up whatever, um, it's, uh, always easier to get the permit upfront.
Also, even if your, their permit isn't required, anytime you're doing anything, it's helpful to call the town, come into the town, explain to them what you're planning on doing, and ask them if you need a permit, they'll tell you. If they tell you you don't need a permit, then you're probably in pretty good shape. Any other, presumably, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and there are no absences, we are all present tonight. The next case on the agenda pertains to 111 Oak Crest Drive, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes, does anyone wish to make an app, a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the variance as requested, um, that, uh, although there was a problem with the sign not being up the full time, it was up for at least a day or so, and I don't think there's any really major issue there. I think we should look past that and approve this motion. It certainly does not create an undesirable change in the neighborhood, in fact, I found the work to be quite attractive, it looked very nice. It's not substantial, um, it needs to be staying up, but that'll come next year. Uh, there certainly, uh, has no adverse, uh, physical or environmental impact, um, I guess you could say it's self-created, because he needed to, uh, replace some outdated steps that were breaking up, but, uh, it's work that needed to be done. With that, I, I move that we approve this variance.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I would just comment and note that when the same thing was done at my house, and I came to the town and asked if I needed a permit, I was told that I didn't need a permit, because I was repairing stairs. All I was doing was putting wood over the concrete and building around it, and they told me that was a repair, not a new thing, and I didn't need a permit. So when I saw this application, I said, oops, okay, I guess they've changed the interpretation on what is a repair.
Kid's gonna be at your house tomorrow.
Well, that's something else, that's, uh- And I think it's important to note that would be, had, this has to do with the setback, so I don't know what the setback is on your house, Chairman, but I think that-
Alright, well, didn't apparently have to do anything with that, 'cause-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you would-
Wasn't even asked about that.
Wouldn't need, um, zoning board to put for-
Oh, that's good.
Put the stairs.
Alright, so I don't need to abstain there.
Just declare.
I'm good, alright. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we are all still present, none of us are absent. Alright, the next case is pertaining to 160 Denzmore Road, this is the application pertaining to the code interpretation. This application is a type-two action for seeker purposes, the next one is not, but this one is, and someone wish to make a motion with respect to, uh, this?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask if council would make sure I use the right language, but I would make a motion that we uphold the determination of the town and code enforcement officer regarding the interpretation of the zoning-
So that would be to deny the appeal?
Correct.
To deny the appeal, I make a motion that we deny the appeal, deny the appeal. On the ground, I don't know what grounds are necessary, but on the ground that the law seems pretty clear, that it says, notwithstanding the foregoing, if you have more than a one or two family unit, it is a multiple dwelling. And the words, notwithstanding the foregoing, typically mean, this trumps what came before. So I, uh, I think that, based on the plain language of the statute, it's pretty clear that the appeal is without merit and should be denied.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I just also want to clarify that that is on a single zoning lot, and I believe that was your point as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we're all still present, no one is absent. Next application is the application for a use variance pertaining to 160, uh, Denzmore Road, Denzmore Road, this is, uh, I think this would fall under type-one action.
It's unlisted.
Unlisted action, okay, and, uh, I would move that, uh, we extend an invitation to the planning board to assume the role of lead agency with respect to this, uh, application. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, uh, no opposed, no abstentions, we're all still present. Is, I would move that we, uh, table, uh, this application, uh, to allow the planning board sufficient time to conduct the, uh, seeker review process that, uh, they need to go through, and also to afford the applicant an opportunity to come back to us with the kind of specific, um, information that we've requested concerning efforts to market the property, uh, what the property has been listed for in the past, what offers had been received for the property in the past, what efforts were made, if any, to, uh, market the property, or, uh, to review what, uh, could be done developing the property consistent with the, uh, any of the uses that are listed in the R1, uh, zoning ordinance as being permitted uses in the district. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, nobody's absent, we're all still present. Last item on the agenda for this evening pertains to the application at, uh, 54 Russell Act, uh, Russell Avenue, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes, I would make a motion that we approve the special use permit, grant the special use permit, we'd previously granted the special use permit for a limited period of time, I would, uh, suggest that we allow, I think we were told that the average life of chickens is about four and a half years, they've been there about a year to a year and a half, I would, uh, propose that we grant the special use permit, having a term of up, up to three and a half years, and/or the, uh, passing of the last of the three existing chickens, whichever comes first, uh, on the same terms and conditions as were, uh, part of the previous, uh, special use permit that we granted sometime in 2013.
Mr. Chairman, one, one comment, I think on the last cases we had, we made it a five-year term, regardless of age.
We had, we had done five years in the past for this one and a few others, we wanted to do them for a more, I think we did them for a one-year period, because we wanted to, uh, see how they would pan out. The five-year ones, I think, were because of the lifespan, expected lifespan of the chickens, and so that's why, since we've already been there about a year, year and a half, that's why I figured three and a half years, 'cause that's equals, if my math is correct, around five years.
Well, I'm referring to the cases that we just went through review with, so it'd be second time around for them, we made those fi- five-year terms, did we not?
Did we do five years on those?
I'm gonna have to check, I'll be the first to, I'm not gonna tell you the wrong thing, so I've checked-
Then I would, I'll amend my motion to be for a period of five years, or until the last of the chickens die, or whatever period it was that we granted on the ones that we did, 'cause I want to be consistent.
Yeah.
Whichever is the earliest of those events to occur is when the use permit would expire.
I think the main factor running for all of them was the death of the current flock.
Right, there's not, they're not to be extended to a new generation of residents in the coop.
Without reapplying.
But they-
Without reapplication, right.
And they also have to have a health checkup once a year.
And, right, that, that, so there would be an annual health check, checkup, that's correct.
Now who's, who's used to this, that this is done? Mr. Weatherby, or?
It's written into, I, I am not, by trade, um, a veterinarian, but I do, we take in the paperwork from what we believe to be licensed veterinarians and make sure-
I was being a little bit facetious, but I mean, we make these things, somebody's gotta keep, keep track of that.
No, it's written into the findings, and we have to, we follow up with the, the applicants to make sure that they're getting their flock, uh, inspected.
I'll second. One might think that would fall under animal control, but who knows? I don't know. All those, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
You're talking about, you didn't put a number on it, she's got three or four, so there's a maximum she can have, she's got three chickens now, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Alright, you agree that we should limit it to the three existing chickens?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the other question is, if one of the existing chickens dies, is it being replaced? When you, or is it gonna fall into the five years?
It's limited to the three existing chickens, which means that if one of the chickens passes them, we're that much closer to the end of the permit, because we're waiting for the last of the three existing to expire as one of the potential-
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Although, motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we're all still present, and-
Is it five years?
I believe that concludes all of the items that are on our agenda, so we were, will be in recess. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you back here next year. Merry Christmas.